Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian Gilbert is the pastor at Brookwood Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Griner, he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Good morning. Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you this morning and, Father, I just think of from whence comes our help. Our help comes from you, Maker of heaven and earth. And, Father, I am thankful to live in this great state and how you have blessed us. Father, being from the South Side, I'm just grateful for many churches across our area that have joined together with so many service organizations and, God, just a lot of ministry and healing going on. Father, we're so thankful that we can turn to you in the midst of difficulty. And, Lord, you walk with us each and every minute of the day. Father, I pray for this council today. James 1:5 says, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask, and you will give liberally." And, Lord, we know knowledge puffs up, but wisdom gives us the insight and direction from you to make the right choices. Father, just continue to be with our mayor and this council. Bless them in direction of Oklahoma City. And, Father, we just thank you for the abundance that we have and enjoy, and we give you all the glory and praise. Father, we just love you and praise you and thank you, and it's in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with office number three, which is the opposite of the mayor, and there's a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions on the appointments? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Next is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for July 30th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for July 16th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. I thought it'd be good to move up the EMS items, which are items 8H and 8I. They have requested that we move those up, and it is typically what we do. Steve's here, and Dr. Goodlow is here. How do you want to handle this? Could one of them, both of them come up together?
Right. I think Steve can come up and talk a little bit, the process for coming up with his contractor, and, as you know, we'd introduce a number of items a couple of, I think, meetings ago now, I think it might be two or three, in regard to the process. We thought we were going to have to raise the rates and raise the transport rate. Steve has put his transport contractor out to bid and received some very positive bids back, and with some changes, and because of that, it appears that we can go forward without effectuating either of those changes. So, Steve, if you'd share with that, and then I think Mr. Matt, you probably want to say a few things.
Okay. Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Mayor, councilors. Before I get started in the actual findings, I'd like to give you a little idea how it was all drawn up. First of all, we started this RFP process back in 2011, and at that time, we looked at all the verbiage in RFP to be sure it was up to date, and one of the major issues, of course, was clinical standards. We hadn't changed, our industry has been slow to change, it's only 30 years old, and I wanted to be sure that the RFP included all the evidence-based medicine and standards of care that it should. So, we contracted for a white paper with the University of Oklahoma School of Emergency and Community of Medicine to look at all aspects of our clinical requirements in the RFP, to be sure that they were appropriate, because that's our major concern, caring for that million and a half people in our service area. Once we received that back, we gave that white paper, which Dr. Goodlow will speak to, to the Emergency Physician Foundation, which are the local emergency physicians in emergency rooms that are on Medical Control Board, and the medical director reviewed over several months. After that review, they voted on each item that would go into RFP, request for proposal, whether they agreed with the findings of the white paper or any other local changes they would like to make. So, that's the formation of the document that we sent out. So, it was evidence-based medicine, and it was checked by the white paper that was contracted through the University of Oklahoma. We sent out requests for proposals. We had three companies. We had Rural Metro, AMR, excuse me, and Paramedics Plus. One was disqualified, AMR, excuse me, Rural Metro. They, for financial reasons, they did file bankruptcy a week and a half ago, so we were pretty on target with our concerns about the company. So, we got actually two proposals back, Paramedics Plus, the current contractor, and AMR, which is the nation's largest provider. Our RFP is broke up, or response to it, into two parts, quality and price. The nine reviewers that looked at quality looked at it blind to price. So, they responded to all the clinical aspects of the RFP and graded those. If you turn to the second page of the, excuse me, the first page of your document, shows that AMR won the points for quality. As I said, there was 300 points, nine reviewers, so a total of 2,700 points available, and AMR received 2631, and Paramedics Plus received 2201. Once all of the quality issues were graded, turned in, we then opened the pricing. Our external auditor and our CFO opened that pricing and computed it for the various scenarios. Once that was completed, you'll find on the second page that on pricing, AMR won all four of the scenarios. Now, the scenario difference is based on two aspects. One of those is response time. The present one is represented in three and four. That's at priority ones at 859, and, excuse me, priority ones at 859, and scenarios one and two is moving that to 1059. There was also concerns about the amount of exclusions, and this came up at several board meetings, and those were for calls that we excluded for weather. There are times in Oklahoma especially that we couldn't force the contractor to make response times because it'd be dangerous both to the ambulance provider and the public and the patient. But the, and that was never very controversial, but the one that was, was the one for peaks on peaks. And what that is, is if we don't, and when we do a performance-based contract where they are getting deductions for every call they're late, or a large deduction each month if they didn't make the 90%, they would have to load in a lot of extra unit hours, that's ambulance, paramedic, and EMT on the streets, to never, ever be affected by the peaks that we get. We get abnormal peaks that cannot be foreseen, and that would drive up the cost. So, we wanted to maintain those, but we wanted to make those lower, the amount of exclusion. So, we looked at two different scenarios. The 200% scenario would reduce it to almost no exclusions, and the rolling 95 and 98% over a 52-week, that lowered it by 43%, 42%. So, we wanted, the best time to negotiate with any contractor is when you're bidding. So, we wanted to be sure that we could see the difference and make a intelligent, the board can make an intelligent decision based on quality and price. On the next, bottom of your page, the next slide shows the combined numbers of quality and price. Once again, price was only worth 200 points, where quality is worth 300 points. It was a quality-driven RFP. The difference, AMR won all four, and you see the differences in far right-hand corner. Next was the issue of choosing which is the best scenario to choose from. We have now looked at quality and price and the scenario consequences. The board looked at primarily because the evidence-based medicine indicates that it does not give you any better outcome at 859, which the doctor will speak to. So, we looked primarily, the board did, at the 1059. And you can see between the two contractors, AMR and Paramedics Plus, there was $32 million difference in scenario one, and there was $44 million six difference in scenario two. And between AMR, there was a $15 million difference between scenario one and scenario two. So, the board felt, with the Medical Control Board there, has held two seats of the nine, that the scenario two was the position that they wanted to support and approved. That was taken to the Board of Trustees, and the board also approved that. Now, what this did was drastically, we had programmed in our formos a 3% increase each year in the cost of our contractor, which it makes up a majority of our costs. This reduced it to the point where future rate increases don't appear unless healthcare reform changes quicker over the next five years, that we will not need one. So, we are here to ask that we might, the board might approve the mileage change because right now, on the mileage, we are billing below what is approved for automobile accidents and workers' comp, and so we're leaving some money on the table, about $150,000 per division. But other than that, there will be no base rate changes requested, and I won't know the final outcome on the 12, going from $9 to $12 on mileage till we present the revised budget to the board in September. But the important thing is we've got a very sound RFP response from a very good company. We've enjoyed 15 great years with Paramedics Plus. We've acknowledged that because in that previous contract, there were two extensions for five years each, and the board and the Medical Control Board granted those without hesitation. This RFP only has one extension for five years, and the reason for that is, our industry, like everyone else, it's easy to forget at times in the public sector that what we do is a practice of medicine, and it's not exempt from all the issues that are taking place in healthcare reform. So, I didn't want to have us tied to two extensions and not have a chance to recalibrate to the costs and the business that we'll be in over the next five years, because our industry and our jobs are going to change and change drastically. So, to close, the board was very happy with the responses. I have two board members here that can discuss the process. I think it went very well. The outcome is quite good for our beneficiaries, and the transition should be, actually, November 1st be transparent to the public. There'll be three to four people in management that will change. Several of the management people are going to stay on. So, the great employees that we have cultivated, educated, and work in the streets and care for everybody in our communities will still be here. It's just one of the great aspects of this model, that it can change over fiscally and clinically without any consequence to the public or actually even to their knowledge.
Okay. It's council's preference to talk to Steve now or ask Steve questions now or interhear from Dr. Goodlow next?
I've got a question. Okay. Why don't you go ahead and ask Steve all these things?
I've got a couple of questions, actually. Steve, on the quality points, what kind of factors were considered when you looked at quality?
Their in-service, what they say, how they're going to handle their inservicability, their continual education, how, what kind of projects and plans for improvement they want to do in materials, logistics that we're in. Materials is very important. Their training of their dispatch center, how they want to maintain accreditation. Both Oklahoma City and Tulsa are one of the 155 ambulance services in the United States that's accredited, and I wanted to be sure they supported that. We were the 34th and 35th dispatch center in the world to be accredited. I wanted to be sure they maintained that. So, it looked at all aspects, and Counsel Ryan, I'll send you a blank sheet so you'll have a full idea.
Just another quick question. Were outcomes considered as part of the quality points?
Outcomes?
Yeah, because, you know, I think the most important thing of, one of your customers has to consider is what happens after I get picked up by the ambulance.
Sure. And our outcomes have been quite good because of the foundation that's produced by the Medical Control Board and the Medical Director and our protocols, and then in the academies in which these companies provide before a person goes on the street. All that will continue.
The other question is, on the priority system that you've established, the times are confusing to me. Under the first two priorities, we've got 1059 for priority one, 24.59 for priority two, 59.59 for, I guess it's not, it's 59 minutes and 59 seconds for priority three, and priority four comes back to 1959.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of a call is a priority four call?
That's a transfer that's called from a hospital to take someone home.
And that carries a shorter time than a priority?
Because those are pre-scheduled.
Okay. Thank you very much, Steve.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Steve, you said that American Medical Response is the largest provider of this type of service. Did we speak to peer cities, and did we do any?
Yes.
Reference checking and all?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Goodlow? Thanks, Steve.
Good morning. It's always a privilege to be with you and represent the men and women in our system, and I'm here to give you assurance and comfort that I think we have great days ahead in our EMS system. I just want to speak to a few points to reference this white paper that these clinical standards were based on. This was a very unique opportunity we had at the university. I wear several hats. In addition to being the Medical Director of the system, I'm also the Section Chief of Emergency Medical Services at the OU School of Community Medicine. And Mr. Williamson approached me in that role and asked to commission a scientific paper that looked at different standards in EMS. It was absolutely a paper in which the goals were not preset. The goal on the front end was simply report what the scientific evidence says. Whatever that is, we'll deal with the fallout, good or bad. What is the evidence? And to give you some sense of how unique this kind of opportunity is, it's honestly the first time I had been approached with a no strings attached agenda on something like this. Every industry expert, physician colleague that I approached around the country and asked to participate in this asked the same questions I did. Well, what's the catch? I can't believe you're asking me. I can just report what the science is, and there's not any kind of political agenda or fiscal agenda, or you're telling me that I can just simply say what the science says, and you'll deal with whatever the fallout is? I said, "It's perfect. You can do that, and we'll take care of it." So, this was a wonderful opportunity. Every single physician that we recruited participated. We didn't have one person that declined the opportunity, and we specifically targeted folks that are seen not only regionally but nationally and internationally as experts in their particular standards of discussion. So, specific to response times, we recruited Dr. Tom Blackwell, who has a very well-renowned career, longstanding medical director in the Charlotte, North Carolina, Mecklenburg County, North Carolina system, presently in Greenville, South Carolina, academic emergency physician, has trained a number of my peers through fellowship training programs that he established long ago. And the reason we chose Dr. Blackwell besides those qualifications is that he has specifically conducted peer-reviewed research into EMS response time. So, he's the natural choice to discuss the issue of response time. And it's a very important issue, because if I'm a citizen at home and I have chest pain, or I fall and injure myself, faster always sounds better. And when someone says faster may not always be better, that should cause me pause. That should cause me to say, "Well, show me the proof." And the proof is in the lack of the science behind the 859 standard that we apply to all EMS calls today. To put that in perspective, if we applied the same rigor of science to paint manufacturing or insulation manufacturing, we'd still be advocating for lead and asbestos. There are issues with safety that we don't always think about on the front end. And so, the reality is, 859 comes from a single study that focused only on cardiac arrest, which is clearly a very important subset of patients we treat, but it's less than 1% of the patient encounters we have in our system, or any other EMS system for that matter of our size. And so, this study is over 30 years old. Now, it was an important study at its time, but we have to take it in the context of it being 30 years old. And 30-plus years ago, 34 to be exact, EMTs did not have the ability to defibrillate like they do in Oklahoma City today and in other cities through the use of automated external defibrillators. Paramedics were able to manually defibrillate back then, they're able to manually defibrillate today, but now we've put that life-saving technology on every piece of apparatus. The Oklahoma City Fire Department responds to medical emergencies with. And so, we've got to put the science in the context of our capabilities today. The other thing we've gotten a lot smarter about is what makes a difference in cardiac arrest resuscitation as well. And the way that we teach CPR, the way that we perform CPR, things we used to think were so important about giving someone adrenaline and putting plastic in their lungs to breathe for them, those things not only are not as important as we used to think, they might be detrimental, in fact, if we get all of our attention focused on that and not on quality chest compressions and shocking when patients have heart arrhythmias that are amenable to that. So, that is the sum total of where this 859 came from and has perpetuated for 30-plus years, is one study in Seattle that said, "If someone has cardiac arrest, and they can have some professional chest compressions within about four minutes, and a paramedic defibrillate them within about eight minutes, their chances of survival are better." We are able to consistently achieve those kind of things in our modern EMS system designed today, even without paramedics on scene. Now, almost always, we have paramedics on scene in those timeframes, but the fact of the matter is, EMS has transitioned markedly since 30-something years ago. So, we're taking one study on less than 1% of patients, and we're applying it to responses to people that have had abdominal pain for three weeks, to people that have had ankle sprains, to people that just don't feel well. And admittedly, when you don't feel well, it could be because you're having a heart attack. Most of the time, when you don't feel well, it's not. And so, we've got to be smart about how we respond. We've got to be safe about how we respond. We have 3,700 men and women that make up our EMS system, and we have a duty to provide for their safety in the commission of their duties, as well as the safety of the public that travels around them. And what is inherently dangerous is when you take a fire apparatus or an ambulance and you roll it off a post or out of a station and you operate it in light and siren mode. That is absolutely an inherently dangerous situation. Thank goodness, we have some very qualified emergency vehicle operators, but for a system that runs over 200,000 responses a year, we are playing with disaster. We've already had one, in my opinion, completely avoidable fatality in this very community because we had an ambulance operator that was probably too focused on response times going to a call that clinically I can't justify how that ambulance was being operated. And neither can Mr. Williamson. That was an individual operator that was operating far outside the norm. But the fact is, these response times weigh on the minds of people that are responding, and we've got to be smart and judicious, and at the same time, not give anything up clinically. Because where the clinical difference matters is in the four- to five-minute range, not in the eight versus nine versus 10 versus 11. I'm completely comfortable in that statement. The thing I want to caution you on, though, is remember, in a system that responds to about 500 people a day, we're always going to have some anecdotal cases that you and I would want to see go just a little bit differently if we could turn back the hands of time. That's part of my job in quality oversight of the system, is to provide that education, that remediation, that overview, so that hopefully the next time, things can go a little bit better. So, I just want to caution you in advance, as we transition to some response time changes that are scientifically far more valid than what we have right now, that are designed to protect everybody's safety, that are designed not to give up anything clinically, because on these calls that are critical, the fire department is still activated, they're still going to have the response times they have. And so, we're talking about one small component of our system, an important component, the ambulance transport component, but it's one component, not all of it. And so, I just want to caution you that you may get a call down the road, and somebody says, "Well, wait a minute. It seems like the ambulance took a minute or two longer, and, you know, everything bad happened." Just be aware, we have issues today. And so, that sounds a bit like a disclaimer, but I just want to be realistic about, we've got to be careful that we operate a system infrastructure on good scientific basis and not an anecdotal call or two. That's my only note of caution. But in general, I am very excited about what the future of our EMS system holds. I appreciate being a part of this selection process in the RFP and being able to represent the medical community, and Dr. Reams, the Chairman of the Medical Control Board, was intricately involved in this. We have high confidence in the ability of American Medical Response to come in here and, effective November 1st, operate this system and maintain very, very high clinical standards. I'm absolutely comfortable with that, and so I offer those comments as some assurance and comfort to you today.
Questions for Dr. Goodlow?
I have a question for Chief Brian, if he's here. Is he?
I don't believe Chief Brian's in town. Kelly's here this morning, but he is not. Do you want Chief Sawyer to come out?
Yes, please. So, one thing I just wanted to clarify is, if you look at, if you look at the two bids, the real, there's no real cost difference between scenario three and four, $6 billion out of $300 million. The real difference is when you shift from this nine to 11-minute response time. And what is happening in Oklahoma City is that, in the past, fire is getting there first 84% of the time. So, that is likely to shift even higher, now that you're going to add a couple of minutes to when the ambulance service arrives. So, I guess what I want to emphasize is, what you pointed out, that the real, in terms of cardiac outcomes, the real difference in outcomes is not at nine versus 10 versus 11 minutes, it's at four, five, and six minutes. And the people that are getting there at four, five, and six minutes is fire. So, it's not just the ambulance provider in a vacuum, it's what's happening with fire and ambulance.
That's exactly right, and it speaks to the importance of our system design and looking at the exact thing that we're talking about. We're not talking about the response time of the system. We're talking, we are talking about the response time of the system, but the changes we're talking about are the response time of one component of the system. What percent time the fire department arrives first, how much that changes, it certainly could change a bit. I think what's important to note is how wise the fire department has been in more selectively responding to the medical calls that make a difference, because it speaks to the mission of the fire department, which is not in competition with the mission of the ambulance transport piece. They're distinctly different missions, but they're synergistic, and so the goal is to have that local fire company maximally available for the calls in their first-due district, and we're trying to use them more selectively so the calls where they can have a and we're trying to use them more selectively so the calls where they can have a clinical impact, they're more available for and not these calls where somebody's had an abnormal lab value from a blood draw two days ago or someone that has an ankle sprain. I mean, not to minimize the medical seriousness, the importance of how we take those calls, but, you know, we can't operate those in a vacuum either. And so, I think we've really moved the bar in the design of not just how the system looks on paper, but how it actually functions in the street and it speaks to the importance and the assurance of maintaining those clinical outcomes that we really have come to enjoy in this city.
And so, that leads to the question I would have for fire, which is that if it was important for fire to get there quickly before, it is going to be even more important going forward that fire get there first because you're adding a couple of minutes to the other part of the team. So, I would ask how we've now implemented this CAD-to-CAD interface, how we had some concerns, I guess in the first few months about now that fire's not going out on every call, only priority one calls. How is that communication working? How is the fire response time now versus prior to the CAD-to-CAD interface?
Well, prior to the CAD-to-CAD interface, we responded on all of those calls, so eliminating those less serious calls, as the doctor referred to, frees up companies. And then, of course, we, you know, our response time hasn't really changed other than now we get the same information at the same time. So, I mean, we're dispatched immediately.
So, response times to priority one calls haven't changed?
I wouldn't say they've changed a lot from the time we get the call to the time of our arrival. We may get the call a few seconds earlier because of the CAD-to-CAD interface and that may make a difference.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested in seeing that, the hard data, the numbers over time, what's happening and where we are and what maybe we can do to get us out of that.
We'll be happy to get that for you.
Thank you.
Could you be more specific, Councilman, just so I understand what you're looking for? Hard data specifically on the response times from the fire department on their first response calls or trying to find the right stuff?
From the time the 911 call comes in to the time fire is dispatched on a priority one call.
Okay.
That was what I was going to clarify. Priority one calls is what you're interested in.
Right.
Very well.
Because when we're talking about cardiac outcomes and trying to get there in four minutes, those are the calls we're interested in.
Very well.
Can I ask you something, Dr.? Are you interested in the time it takes the fire department to respond and arrive on scene or the time they're dispatched?
Well, what happens, somebody calls 911.
I understand that.
And it doesn't go to fire, it goes to Emsa. So, then Emsa has a series of questions that they ask first. Then, they instruct fire, "Okay, this is a priority one call and you need to go." So, how is that communication? How fast is that occurring? There's a level between where Emsa is deciding whether fire goes or not and I just want to know how seamlessly that's occurring.
That's a good question because it's dropped a little bit, just a little bit because it's not, they're not immediately dispatched. You're right, there's a protocol that goes for before they're, and so you're really looking for the amount of time the case goes with the protocol.
Right, exactly. And it has slowed down a little.
Yes, sir.
Slightly. Okay, thanks.
So, if I may, it is a good question because it brings up two points. One, going back to the response time standard, whatever the response time standard is for the ambulance transport component, it's important to note that we measure that in this system from the time of 911 call until ambulance arrival. Not all systems choose to use that standard, which is by far a more stringent standard than some systems use. Instead, utilizing when the actual ambulance is dispatched or when they go en route. And so, we like to look at things from the perspective of the patient because that's how they're going to look at it and that's what we think matters. So, it's important that we have a realistic and stringent response time. The other point is there is some call processing time involved as you bring up. That is the trade-off involved in being more selective in the response. And so, ultimately, I think from a medical standpoint, it benefits us as a community because we're getting the right resources to the best calls. And so, it's hard to say we can do that without any time involved in that, but we really work very hard to minimize that and it speaks to the fact that both centers in Oklahoma City and Tulsa are nationally accredited. You can't get that without being as efficient as you can be utilizing that system, which is by far the most evidence-based use system in the country for emergency medical dispatch.
Jeff, Pete?
If we're going to go from, we're going to raise the response time to 10.59 from where it's been, that's going to mean there'll be fewer ambulances on the street. Does that follow?
Well, actually, that's not correct because in our review of the request for proposal and Steve could probably best speak to this in terms of the operational consideration, our understanding, everyone's understanding on that group is that, yes, the response time standard is increasing from 859 to 1059, but what's simultaneously changing is the amount of exclusions that the contractor gets when calculating their percent compliance with that. So, today, they get exclusions for system busyness and part of this RFP was taking a good many of those exclusions away, nearly 50% is what's been calculated. And so, any potential for fewer units on the street from the time response standard has been completely negated and I believe and the Medical Control Board believes appropriately so by reducing the exclusions that the contractor gets in their compliance with that. So, our expectation is that not only will the actual wheels on the street remain the same, our expectation is we're probably going to see another ambulance or two in the city to be able to meet that because there are stiff financial fines if they don't have appropriate compliance with that and we're taking away a good bit of the exclusion that they have today.
Well, I've always been of the opinion that the 859 is what drove the number of ambulances on the street. So, it's an easy conclusion to come to that if you make that 1059, you're going to have fewer.
It absolutely, sir, it absolutely would be if the other point wasn't simultaneously.
I appreciate that because my big concern was that response times in the periphery of the city are lousy anyway and they're not really going to get much better. I mean, I understand why they are, they've got populations and number of incidences and all those kind of things. I understand why they're less than they are, but if you reduce the number of trucks on the street, then you're really going to make those calls really extended. But that's a good explanation and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Dr.?
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be with you.
Yeah, Larry?
Yeah. I had the privilege of sitting in on the evaluation process and just a couple of comments I think are applicable here. Number one, the nine of us who evaluated the quality aspect ranged from amateurs like myself to medical professionals to an EMS practitioner that was involved. The grading system was done separately so that I wasn't copying off of somebody else's page and they weren't copying off of mine. They should have because I was right, but anyway, they weren't copying off. And the conclusion that came up on the clinical was all, I'm going to come back to a term that Pat used, outcome, was outcome-based. The underlying decisions, ratings were which of these two companies would give the best outcomes to our people. And that, I think, was the underlying concept. That outcome was also involved in the discussion about the 859 versus the 1059 and the medical evidence that Dr. Goodlow prepared for us both at the evaluation and then at the board clearly convinced all of us that the 1059 would provide the outcomes to our clients that we're serving in the way that they would be pleased. And so, I have the greatest confidence in what was done in both the process of selecting AMR and also in going to this 1059 response time for priority one calls. Because as a caveat, as the doctor said, this is only one part of the total system and probably the most important part in a cardiac arrest, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doctor, that I learned from this is if some bystander who's there at the scene when the individual goes into cardiac arrest knows how to perform CPR, that increases the rate of survival dramatically and that's the key component and that's really not affected by when the ambulance gets there or when fire gets there. That's another situation. And so, hopefully, we'll all as a community be promoting the training in CPR because that's the real key, am I right, in providing a good result?
Well, you're absolutely correct and you're right on top of the medical science. In fact, the next vacation that I take, I'm going to put you in charge when I'm gone. Mr. McAtee is exactly correct and it speaks also to the importance of the work that our emergency medical dispatchers do over the phone in providing what we term zero-time medicine because we enjoy nearly a 50% rate of bystander CPR. Now, I wish that rate was a lot closer to 100% when somebody collapses, but to put it in perspective, that is extremely high compared to other major metropolitan areas in the United States. So, about 50% of the time somebody has cardiac arrest in Oklahoma City, we find some bystander CPR when the first EMS unit arrives, be it fire or Emsa ambulance. The majority of that CPR that's done is actually prompted, initiated, encouraged, take your semantic of choice, by instructions that our emergency medical dispatchers give over the phone. And so, it's not just sending help, it's actually providing help over the phone before our trained responders get there. And so, it is absolutely a difference between life and death maker in many cases.
All right. Larry, thanks. Doctor, thank you. So, we need to strike items 8H?
Yeah. Can we have Doug Dower step up for a second? When we started this, going through the budget process a couple of years ago, actually going back to when we laid out the mandatory total care program, not mandatory, but the change in the total care program a number of years ago, we knew it would be a finite time. At some point, we're going to have to raise the rates and we thought it was going to be this year until the rates come in. And so, Doug was our budget director and monitors the financial situation of Emsa very closely. So, Doug, at this time, is it your recommendation that we strike the items before us today?
That's correct. We do not need the rate increase for the total care monthly rate with the five-year projections that came with the new contract. It looks like the current 3.65 a month will last at least three years, so we'll be covered at that rate for the next three years. And again, the transport rate increase was designed to help make that 3.65 a month go a little bit further. We won't need that at this time. Now, as Steve mentioned, the mileage rate increase would allow Emsa to be able to charge a little bit more that's allowable and so that may be worth considering, but that is not significant enough to alter whether we need to maintain the 3.65 a month or not.
It's also not on the agenda today.
Okay. Well, it's a piece of the 1,500 rate, transport rate increase, the mileage increase was also part of that agenda item. So, it was raise the transport rate and the mileage rate.
Doug, thank you. So, with Council's ascension, we will strike items 8H and H8I.
Would it be possible to just pass the mileage?
Apparently it would be. So, you would modify that and do that if that's Council's desire?
We think it's, as Steve put it, if there's money being left on the table with regard to what's paid by whatever providers pay it, it seems to me we ought to go ahead and do that. Which one of the eight, is that in? Which one of the two? That's 8H. I would move that we amend 8H to delete everything except our ability to raise the mileage rate.
Okay. Comments or questions then from Council? Okay, Larry?
You all can do that, but didn't I hear you say that you're in the process of doing your evaluation and coming up with a recommendation whether we need to do that right now or whether we should do that right now?
Well, our recommendation, we're redoing the budget. We're leaving the $12 in because we feel we should do it, but we took all the other increases out.
So, you're comfortable with us proceeding? I mean, that 12, that's the number, 12?
Yes, sir, that's the number.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right, then, everybody ready to vote then on item 8H with the as stated by Pete in his motion?
Do we have to go on the initiative first?
I think that's going to be the only part that we vote on. Is that right?
Yes.
So, that'll be the only part we're voting on. All right. Cash your votes. Passed unanimously.
Can we, should I have a motion on I to strike?
Motion to strike item I?
Would you?
Cash your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all. We're on item five of the Council agenda, its request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, this morning, a couple on page 14 under item 8B, it's a S.P.U.D. 706, it's in Ward 3. The applicant requests that this application be continued until August 27th. Again, S.P.U.D. 706, that's item 8B. Moving on to page 16 under item 8E1, item E, 9208 South Villa, west of that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item I, 1157 Southeast 19th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item J, 2416 Southwest 21st Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item L, 2130 Northwest 32nd Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item P, 1 Southeast 40th Street, west of that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Moving on to item 8F1, item A, 2001 Bonnie Castle Lane, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item B, 2415 South Broadway, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item C, 2937 Cashin Place, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page 17, item H, 2809 West Park, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item M, 3047 Northwest 10th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item O, 3600 Northwest 11th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. 1801 Northwest 13th Street, west of that be stricken, that's now occupied. Item B, 2115 Northwest 22nd Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item Y, 801 Southwest 28th Street, west of that be stricken, owner secured. Item double B, 1732 Northwest 37th, west of that be stricken, that's now occupied. Item double C, 1128 Southwest 39th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item II, 704 Southwest 58th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured.
On item 8B, did you say deferred or struck?
Deferred until August 27th.
Okay. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's assess the Council meeting convenance and municipal facilities authority. There are four items. Comments or questions on the MFA?
Your Honor, I have a question on MFA A and it's an interactive voice response system we're going to put in. We make a comment in the write-up that it will save thousands of hours and annual of city staff resources, which is a very great idea, but it seems like it's a promise and there was no mention here of any kind of a record-keeping effort to measure that and see if we really do save that much.
We can certainly quantify that for you.
Well, I think if we're going to make that kind of comment, we ought to have some kind of quantification behind it.
We'd be happy to do so.
Your Honor, on the same subject, I'm just pleased that this is one of the recommendations from the city auditor's review of the permitting and licensing department and it just indicates that the city in general is continuing to strive to improve the providing of services and this is certainly an area that I and I think other members of the Council would receive complaints on from time to time about the timeliness and Pat, I think your point's well-taken too. We need to monitor that and measure that if possible, but I am excited and pleased to see that we're taking steps to improve the overall process and I want to, again, show my appreciation to our city auditor and everybody on the staff who worked towards this study. Thank you.
Bob Diners here and we really have improved the response time in the building inspection area.
These systems, we've been reviewing our peer cities, several of them use this system and it allows to call in and make your, set up your inspection times over the phone. It eliminates the having to do it with a fax machine or phone calls, so it should save us time because we're not having to interact with the party as they make their inspection.
I have no question that it's going to be a more efficient system. It just seems like these kind of statements just made and save thousands of hours, we need to quantify that somehow to see if we're really saving, how much we're saving and if the public really wants it. I'm not sure that press one for plumbing inspection, press two for electrical inspection, it won't make much sense, but we'll give it a shot.
We'll monitor that. When we change to allow online When we change to allow online garage sale permits, we track that, the numbers and how that changed. We'll do the same once this is implemented to see how it affects us.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC MFA convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items.
Yes.
All right. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent document.
Would we ask for the individual consideration?
All right. Are there any individual considerations?
Mr. Mayor, Scott Meacham is here this morning with I-2E to give us a presentation on a new program that's out there.
All right.
Mayor, with regard to that presentation, as Scott's coming forward, I just wanted to make it clear that I serve on the board of I-2E, and when we move to vote on these, there are two items, 6AM, 1 and 2. If we could separate those, I'd appreciate it.
Where does that 6?
This is 6, I think, AM, 1 and 2. They're companion items, and if we could just vote on those separately, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Good morning, Scott.
Morning. We're here today to present an economic development proposal that we have developed with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Foundation, and it deals with some funds that I-2E received from the federal government and SIP funds that the city has as a result of the bond issue approved by the voters of Oklahoma City in 2007. You had some extra funds that were created in that bond issue that were set aside for low-interest loan programs, and they haven't been deployed yet. And so we worked on a way, on a methodology, to use some of our funds we had along with your funds and hopefully put them together for businesses in Oklahoma City. If you think about economic development from cities, typically what cities do is they focus kind of on two areas. One is incentives for large companies to bring in large employers and jobs and infrastructure improvements. And I think the theory is that with respect to the small businesses in the community, kind of all boats rise in a rising tide, and if you provide those types of job opportunities and those types of infrastructure improvements, that that helps all small businesses in your community. And that's probably pretty true for the retail sector, but when you think about kind of the heart and soul of your community, your primary jobs, your small manufacturers, your service companies, those types of entities, their success is really more dependent on individual market factors they might be facing, and it's much more difficult to reach those types of companies with incentive programs, and that's why you see very few of those types of programs. We've developed a very unique program that we are calling, I always do this wrong, we call it Grow OKC Fund, and it involves $1 million investment of low-interest loan funds from the SIP program as well as $1 million of preferred equity or convertible debt, sometimes you hear that referred to as near equity, from I-2E, which will create a pool of $2 million for Oklahoma City's small businesses. And it will provide money for them to grow, for them to protect jobs they have and/or grow, provide them the ability to take advantage of market opportunities they have through the provision of low-interest loans and equity and near equity investments. To kind of stretch the money and pool our risk, so to speak, we're going to limit it to a minimum of $100,000 and a maximum of $250,000 per investment. We, I-2E, will administer and manage the funds and provide reporting back to the trust and the city. I want to stress that this does not compete with local banks. It is rather a way to leverage bank financing. And I'll give you an example. Let's say you're a small manufacturer and you're facing foreign competition. Typically, the way we compete in the United States is we compete on quality, whereas the foreign markets, they're leveraging low-cost labor. In the United States, you have to do quality, which means heavy capital investments in technology in the United States. Well, if you're a growing company, or even if you're a company in a tough market, it's oftentimes hard to get the equity that a bank's going to give you, going to require for that $1 million piece of equipment. So you're going to have to come up with typically $200,000 to $250,000 of cash to buy that $1 million piece of equipment that allows you to compete. The way this program works is the bank can loan its funds, the city would come in, and you would be second to the bank, but you'd be fully collateralized on your piece, but second to the bank, and then we would come in and we'd be uncollateralized as an unsecured lender or as an equity, preferred equity provider in the program. So it'd be bank, then city, and then I-2E at the end of the train. So we wouldn't compete with the banks, we'd actually be leveraging their capital. And I've spoken with a couple of bankers, including David Harlow at Bank First, and said, you know, what do you think about this program? He thought it was a great idea because he's, I'm a former banker, too. We see the problem of trying to figure out ways to get our borrowers the financing they need. Our qualifications will be, it'll have to be a small business as defined by the SBA, and generally that means less than 250 employees, has to be located within the city limits of Oklahoma City, has to be, it'll only focus on companies creating primary jobs, and you can sort of read that as proxy for non-retail. Primary jobs or manufacturing jobs, business-to-business service jobs, those types of jobs, data processing services, all those different kinds of things. There'll be a requirement of dollar-for-dollar co-investment at the investment level, which can be in the form of like the example I used earlier, debt that the owner has gone out and borrowed himself, cash that the owner might want to put in, or additional equity that the owner might put into the deal. The program terms is the SIP funds will be required to be secured funds with adequate collateralization, which you'll be giving as a low interest rate, you know, maybe 1% or 2%. The SIP funds will be subordinate to any private financing that's going into the deal, and then I-2E funds will be subordinate to everybody. So in liquidation, your funds would receive priority over our equity funds, which kind of makes us have to do a pretty good job in our underwriting because we're kind of at the end of the train. So if something goes bad, we're going to be last out. The underwriting and due diligence will be managed by I-2E. We will provide our recommendations to the foundation, and a funding proposal will then be prepared jointly with the foundation to be submitted then by the foundation to the trust for final approval. So any deal that's done will be, will go through a sort of a, not only our internal review processes that we have at I-2E, but we'll go through the city's review processes through the foundation, through the trust, and however y'all handle it at the council. I don't know, I'm not sure how that works. The metrics, we'll provide quarterly reports on investment activities and accomplishments, and the key metrics that we're going to be tracking are jobs created, and we should say created slash retained, and also private investment that we're leveraging. Because what we ought to do is as we put capital in, and what we've found is capital attracts capital. So if we can help a company acquire capital, then what we've seen actually on our IT funds on earlier-stage businesses is oftentimes we attract capital about 18 to 20 times. For this, we hope to attract maybe 10 times capital is sort of what we're going to be targeting. So that's kind of a thumbnail of what we're talking about, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Scott, you said that we're fully collateralized. Why couldn't the loan come from the bank if it's fully collateralized?
So let's say, again, use my example, let's say you're buying a piece of equipment that costs $1 million. The bank will not loan you $1 million for that piece of equipment. That's 100% loan to value. They have basically, they'll loan you, depending on the bank, 75% to 80% of that cost. You've got to come up with cash or other collateral or something to make up that difference. So on that $1 million piece of equipment, let's say the bank owns, loans 80%. It would loan 80% of that cost, $800,000. We would put in $100,000 of city SIP funds, and so then you would also have an equity cushion behind you because we're not, we're not taking the equity. We're going in as a preferred equity investor. So you're collateralized then by that value of that equipment over and above the bank's $800,000 that they have loaned against you.
And is the interest rate that will be paid back equal to what the bank's lending rate?
No.
Or you're saying 1% or 2%? The bank's loan might be what?
Well, depending on the, you know, the company and their finances and all that, but it could be anywhere in this market. I mean, you know, your very best borrowers are getting, you know, prime-plus loans, so they'd probably be paying, you know, 6% to maybe 10%, depending on how it is. If it was much worse than that anymore, that bank won't be talking to you because underwriting standards have gotten pretty tough in this market. But so, you know, it's going to save the company significant money on the cost of borrowing, and I think that was the purpose in creating that tranche of the SIP funds, because it really says low interest or even forgivable debt. Now, we're not doing forgivable debt in this program, we're just looking at low-interest loans.
Is there a way to quantify the success at the end?
Yeah, I think the way you quantify the success is, one is number of jobs created and retained, which we always track that, and then the other is, I think, the amount of capital that our capital pulls in, and we always track that also. And we require as part of our documentation that we sign that companies do that kind of reporting to us on an annual basis. So we get, and we get some other stuff. We'll also get like average wage data and some things like that, so we'll be able to track some other metrics also. But the core metrics are jobs created or retained and other investment attracted.
Questions for Scott? David?
Scott, I think, and I'm sure you approach it with a high level of professional skepticism, but the issue of adequate collateralization may mean something two years after the loan is made versus when the loan is first made, especially with the equipment that's involved in technology because it constantly gets changed. Is there a process to continue to reevaluate whether or not this loan is adequately collateralized?
Typically, what we do, again, I'm confident on my old lender hat here. So typically, what we do is we will try to make sure that the term of the loan sets the kind of depreciation curve for the equipment, okay? Now, nobody knows about, you know, if somebody invents the new computer, that can't be forecast. But we know in general that what the depreciation curve looks like for equipment. So typically, what we'll try to do is set the term of your loan, so you're getting principal pay down, hopefully a little more quickly than the value of the equipment's going down. And again, that's why we do an underwriting process, because we don't want to be just dependent on the equipment itself. We want to make sure, and that's where we're coming in because we're not secured at all, we want to make sure this is a good company with a good management and good, you know, good operating history, because we're totally dependent on the company being successful.
Right. Well, and we appreciate that and we recognize that, and that gives me a little bit more comfort from that perspective. But just as Councilman Ryan brought up just a few minutes ago about measurements, I think it would be helpful if we could, if we decide to enter into this program on an annual basis, get some type of report as to the success, and I'm measuring success not just by new jobs, but our return of capital that we're investing in.
And that will be part of the reporting we'll give you. We'll give you a reporting on an aggregate basis and then on an individual basis of how the fund's doing, how repayments are going, all of that type of information.
You know, there's a reason why banks are reluctant to lend money to new startup small businesses because they just have a high rate of failure, and I'm not trying to be pessimistic in this, but again, I think we have to approach it with a level of professional skepticism that all of these will not be successful, but in the long run, we hope more of them are than are not.
And let me stress for these funds, and I know we're kind of, our business is kind of a startup business, that's kind of what we do. These funds are unique for us because these are funds that we got for existing businesses. So these will not be startups. These may be a business that's wanting to go into a new market or a new product, but they will not be startup companies. They'll be companies that have operating history that we feel real comfortable about, you know, their operations and where they're headed.
Good. Thank you. Any others? Larry?
Scott, an applicant for these funds will be vetted by you all at I-2E. Then that particular transaction will be brought to the Economic Development Trust?
Yes.
And the trust will evaluate and make a decision whether the trust thinks that this is a good investment to make, and then that also comes to the city council?
I don't know about that step. I guess that, Rint shaking his head, yes, so yeah, that would then come to the council.
I knew the answer. I thought it was.
Okay. That's on your all sides of the equation. I'm unsure how that works.
And so if the council did not feel good about the prospects of the enhanced market that this company was going after, the council has the authority to say, no, thank you.
Absolutely.
And then the money, then as the company repays these funds, that money comes back in to the city's SIP fund.
Absolutely.
So one metric I would think that David is looking, I would look for, is we'd like not to have any of these go under, but we recognize there may be some. And just to make a final comment, I don't believe in debt, so I don't like this kind of a deal, but if you do not have a problem with debt, the mechanics are, in fact, this is a pretty sound deal, and it's targeted, correct me if I'm wrong again, for the small company, whereas our previous incentives that we've done in the Economic Development SIP program have been more oriented towards creating jobs for large companies.
Absolutely.
So we're helping the small guy here if he's able to carry it out.
And when you look at the job creation, it's primarily at the small business level where the majority of new jobs are created. And so this is an opportunity that we discussed at the Economic Development Trust to help those small businesses where the new jobs are being created. It's a great program. I think the I-2E people and Scott has done an excellent job of laying a foundation to protect the city investment, and I think the point he made, these are not startup companies, these are established companies, and they're making an equity investment in it that is unsecured, and so we're going to be careful about the underwriting.
The other comment I just make, if you're expecting that this is going to create jobs in the $100,000 and up range, it's probably not. These are going to create manufacturing jobs that are going to be more in the 25,000 to $30,000 to $35,000 range, which is where there's a tremendous need for incentive because everybody can't pull down $100,000 plus salary.
Just as a comment to follow on with Pat, I think my recollection, I said Kathy here, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we started the program with the 2007 bonds, we had a small carve-out for really trying to create some startup businesses, and, you know, maybe in tranches of $100,000 at a time. And I think when we rewrote our charter, it was the feeling of this body that that was a little too risky for the city. And so I think this is a fantastic program to help kind of hybrid, allow I-2E, you know, to come in as an equity partner with us and be able to vet those currently operating companies. I think it's a really nice way to try to grow some jobs in our smaller employer base without the city having to assume quite as much risk as we would have in the previous program.
And that program still exists, but it is for startups. It's called the Emerging Technologies Program, and it is a forgivable loan program, but this is very different, and Scott and I met and talked about it shortly after he was appointed to try to come up with a program that would really target small businesses, and that, this is the idea that Scott.
And Emerging Technologies has been rarely used.
We've only done one, yeah. It just doesn't really fit very well with our ability to take on risk, so.
Scott, when do you think the first potential loan or customer would come back to the Development Trust?
Our plan is to move really quickly on this. We have engaged the Oklahoma City Chamber to help us kind of get the word out. Also, we're planning on meeting with the banks. David Harlow told me as soon as we had something for him, he wanted to see it. Plus, we've been talking to the Oklahoma Manufacturing Alliance, and they're real interested and want to take it out to all their members in the Oklahoma City market. So my hope is within a few months, we can get some things generated.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott?
I got one.
Yeah, James?
I want to go back to the results. My question is really, how do you calculate the results? Because in your scenario, there's a $1 million investment, and, but our part in it is only 100,000ths of 10%. So if in that $1 million investment, say 20 jobs are created, do we take credit for two of them?
No.
Or do we take credit for all 20?
Yeah, you typically take, because it wouldn't have happened but for our, but for our funds that we're putting in, so you take credit for the whole deal.
Okay. That's just kind of interesting to me because it seems like we would be taking credit for more than what we should be taking credit for. I don't know, I mean, because in my view, businesses create jobs, not government programs. Government programs can assist it, and, but... Government programs can assist it, and, but, so, I mean, I don't, I'm not against this.
Yeah. No, I mean, you're absolutely right. Businesses create jobs, but think about it, the million dollar deal doesn't happen without the $200,000 equity investment. So again, if we were, you know, we're just using it as an outcome statistic, so it's not like we're, you know, asking the government to give us money for job created or something, which might be a different deal, but the jobs wouldn't have created, and yeah, this program's all about assisting private business in creating and growing and retaining jobs in Oklahoma City. That's what's.
I guess it just seems kind of odd, because that company would say that we created 20 jobs, and then this program would be saying that we created 20 jobs, whereas really, there weren't 40 jobs created, there were only 20.
Typically, the way we word it is not like that. Typically, the way we word it is, the companies we funded created X number of jobs at an average wage of Y. Okay? That's typically how we word it.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Do you have a clawback provision? I mean, if the deal is that this is going to create so many jobs and it doesn't, is there?
There will be like funding tranches and things like that. We do that to make sure they do what they say they're going to do. So in that essence, if you make a commitment and say it is a, they're going to take four steps, then what you'll do is you'll tie your funding to each of the four steps to make sure they have them. It's not going to be like quality jobs program that the state has, where they sign a contract and they have to pay it back, because it just, it's really not a giveaway program like that. It's really more of an investment.
We're putting the money up front. I mean, so we don't, we're not seeing the jobs created and then turning over the money. We're putting, we're giving the money up front.
Well, we won't, but we won't invest, we'll invest the money when they're doing the thing that creates the jobs. So it's going to be immediate. It should all happen at the same time. Now, granted, there could be like a six-month construction phase-up or something like that, but we're at least going to have them make the representation to us that they've created jobs. And we could put in things in their like loan covenants that they'll have to sign, that they'll, they're saying they can do this, and it'll be an event of default if they don't, so we'd have some recourse if they don't do that. I mean, that wouldn't be out of the question.
Why, what was the, why did you exclude all retail from the program?
Well, for two reasons. One, well, actually, two real good reasons. Our program excludes it, and your SIP program excludes it. Your SIP program is limited to primary jobs only, and primary jobs exclude retail. So both of our funds don't allow retail.
Is Kathy, does the emerging program, does that exclude retail also?
It also excludes retail.
It does?
Yeah.
So if you're, if you're trying to address food deserts, grocery store, you can't use any of these for that kind of?
Not under the current policy, no.
Oh, you do have retail?
Not with the SIP program.
Right.
That's what he asked, is, we don't allow retail investments through the strategic investment program.
Okay. And that's a council, I mean, that was?
I would need to have my attorney here, too.
Okay.
So I wouldn't want to commit to something that may not be allowed in the state statutes, so.
Okay. And the I-2-E fees that come out of this, you just, you charge an origination fee at the, on the loan?
Yes, just on the loan side of the transaction. So, which is kind of a good deal, because it actually, we're not charging anything on the equity side, so it actually makes the overall cost really low for a deal like this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Scott has a couple of unique ties to Oklahoma City. One is that his grandfather was city manager, Scott, in the 50s?
Yes.
Bill Gill?
Twice.
Two cents. Two cents as the city manager back in the 50s. And his other tie, which you will not find on his resume, is that he was, went to state treasurer, he was the point person on the Henry administration for the, when the city purchased the water storage rights for Lake Sardis.
Thank you for that, Scott, also. I think.
If we could have a motion on AM 1?
Okay, I think we wanted, we're voting on item 6, AM 1. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, we can vote on AM 1 and 2.
Okay, we can do it at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion for the approval of items A, M1, and 2.
Move the items in second.
A motion made in second. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you very much. I guess we'll go on and do the rest of the consent docket now. Are there any individual considerations that?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor, as relates to 6R. There were, John, if you'll hold your questions for a second, let's see what they say.
Mr. Mayor, I had, just wanted to make mention of 6O, and I had a question on 6V as in Victor.
Are there any other considerations? Okay, John, why don't you get us started on 6R, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were a total of 16 projects approved, but we only have 14 agreements back. What two organizations are we lacking the agreements from?
The two organizations are the Community Enhancement Corporation and one other agreement from Hope Community Services. We've now received those, they'll be on the next consent document. Jerry Shaded, I'm with the Planning Department replacing Jane Farrell.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, item 6O, we talk about these frequently, but I always think it's really important. In February of this year, the council adopted a resolution to authorize our Development Services Department to apply for a $74,000 grant to the ASPCA to help fund a part-time veterinarian and a veterinary assistant, and that grant was awarded to us, and so we are accepting the grant today, and I just want to thank the ASPCA. They've worked so closely with our staff and Animal Welfare Division to try to improve the services that we provide, so it's always exciting to see that.
I was going to say anything about that. I think it's a great program. The grammar in that write-up was pretty poor, though. It needed to be corrected or something, so you might look at that.
Yes, sir.
Get your grammarian in there. Being an English teacher is a terrible burden.
I noticed that as well. And then on item 6V, this is, city manager, I just had a question. This is the resolution declaring an emergency and some work to the Thunder Locker Room.
Yes.
Is there insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure answer is yes. There's some deductibles involved, but yes.
Okay, that looked like a pretty high number, $268,000 of work. I was just hoping that there might be some reimbursement down the line for this.
There is. I'm not aware of the deductible amount, but this is predominantly being paid for from insurance proceeds or on the building cost due to the flood damages. So this is a result of the May 31 storms. There was an internal pipe that burst that drained the roof water, and it actually flooded the locker room area, so this is an emergency to actually repair that, get that done with insurance proceeds.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see that was there.
And have it open before the season starts again in August.
Great. Okay, it's not, good.
I'm going to address your honor, but I guess he's not here anymore, so. I addressed this question to you on 6Z, Z is in zebra. This is a project out at the fairgrounds, and it shows a source of funds from OC MAPS. Is that the MAPS for kids? And if so, what's it doing, funding a building at the fairgrounds?
I think this is MAPS 3, is it not?
I think I can respond to this. This is actually just a general architectural engineering contract. It's an annual contract that we engage for the fairgrounds each year. We went through a selection process, and so we've identified redundancy to take care of small projects that come up from time to time at the need of the fair. So you see the multiple funding sources, depending on if it's a MAPS need or a general city need, it may come out of some of their proceeds, so you'll see multiple funding sources, hotel motel tax, general funds, CIP, bond funds, trust funds, MAPS funds.
But we won't use MAPS 3 funds out at the fairgrounds.
Okay, I'm very relieved to hear that. And then on AD, Alfred Delta, this is the new police station?
Yes, sir.
Project, and I felt that the police station suffered from deferred maintenance in its current state, and I think that contributed to this situation of having to improve it. Who will maintain this, the new police station? Be responsible for maintenance, any?
The new police station will be, you know, there will be some contract works done on it, the police department will be in charge, and general services will assist in the process.
So we don't have an expert looking at the maintenance of that building?
In the design process?
Not in the design, but I'm talking about after the building's completed, who's going to maintain the building?
Well, it'll be a combination of those three.
Okay, well, I would hope that we do a little better job than it was done previously, because the police department was forced to operate under some really bad conditions because of deferred maintenance in that building, and I think that's an unfortunate situation. Correct. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent docket? Do we have a motion to approve? Okay, we need a motion to approve the?
We do, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, we, my conscience here. It's her fault, so, let me clear the TV audience. This bus was her fault, not mine. Mine will come later on in the program, I'm sure. Anyway, please cast your votes, and the consent docket is approved. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda are some items for individual, no, I guess the concurrent docket.
There's no concurrent docket.
There is no concurrent docket this time. Okay, so the next thing is item A, which are some items that require individual council votes, and, excuse me just a moment, I'll hit that part of the agenda. Items requiring separate votes, item 8A, ordinance in Ward 7, or facility in Ward 7. John, do you want to say anything about this? Sure, I'll move for approval. Is anybody signing up on this one?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no comments.
Yes.
A motion made in second to approve item 8A, and please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Item 8A, do we approve both those, one and two?
No, just one.
Okay, so now we have to have separate vote on A 2?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Ward 8 is utility easement, this is a relocation of easement, drainage easement, and Ward 8 is in conjunction with a new medical facility to be allowed on Western Memorial, and it's, they are replacing the drainage facility as part of their project, so all this does is to vacate an easement that's not being, currently is.
Yes.
Motion made, anybody sign up on this one? Okay, please cast your votes, and item 8A 2 is approved. Item 8B is a?
We deferred that one.
Okay, deferred. Item 8C, ordinance on final hearing relating zoning and planning code, amending chapter 59 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code.
Mr. Chairman, Bob Teener did a presentation on this a couple of meetings ago. This is the third time it's been before council, it's on for final hearing today, and there's a lot of cleanup in the code as staff administers code, we find unclarity from time to time, and this is an attempt to clarify some of those issues. Do you have any questions? Bob's here.
Anybody sign up on this one? We have nobody, the public here. A motion made in second to approve the ordinance changes. Are any further comments? Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you very much. Item 8D, if I can find?
Mr. Chairman, 8D is a public hearing on the front yard parking. Bob Teener, last meeting, gave us a presentation on this, and again, this is a clarification on RVs and boat trailers and boats and some things along those areas. So this is the second time it's been before council, it's a public hearing today, and will be brought forth before council in two weeks for the final hearing.
Did anybody sign up on this one? We have no public, anybody from, if you want to make any comments on item 8D?
Move the items in second.
This moves it up to a final hearing in two weeks. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Do anybody sign up on this one?
No one.
We have nobody signed up on this one? Is anybody here like to make any comment under, any item under 8E, which is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures?
There's a lady in the back.
Would you come forward, please?
Please.
8E.
8E.
Ma'am, if you'll wait there, we'll bring you a microphone, so you won't have to make this trip up here.
And ma'am, may I have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Carla Morgan, and my address on the record is 1624 Northwest 15th Street. That property's been declared dilapidated due to a fire, and I just wanted to let you wonderful people know that I've vacated the property, and my daughter and her boyfriend are doing so. That's been the biggest issue with my house, and there was a fire on June 1st, and so they're in the process, they're getting out, and I've told them many times over to get out. I'm in the process. David Otto's on his way, and he's been working with me, he cleaned up the area, we used dumpsters to get all the debris, and I'm in the process of filing a formal eviction to get them off the property if they're not out by today.
Now, are you intending to redo the house, any?
No, sir, it's listed up for sale, the property is, for investors.
It's a fixer-upper. Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
Code would recommend your approval for?
We'll leave it on for 30 days, then, and see what happens during that 30 days, and if there's any, 30 days, and if you'll work with our staff, they'll coordinate that communication so it'll be seamless as far as you're concerned. Thank you very much for your comments, please. Are there any other comments on anything under item 8E? We need a motion to approve item 8E?
Yes.
A motion made in second. Is there any comments or questions? Please cast your votes, and item 8E is approved. Item F is a public hearing on unsecured structures. Is there anybody here who would like to address the council on any item under 8F? We have a number of items there. Did anybody sign up to speak? We have nobody signed up to speak on it. There's anybody here, now, one more chance to speak on any item under 8F. Okay, are there any questions or comments? We have a motion, a motion made in second to move the item. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you very much. All right, next item is item 8G.
Mr. Vice Mayor, item 8G is a second public hearing. This is on a fire sales tax item, and it's for two items. It's some wellness equipment, but it's primarily for $3.5 million to upgrade the self-contained breathing apparatuses for the fire department. This was heard two weeks ago.
This meets all the criteria for that expense of those funds?
Yes, sir.
Are there any comments or questions on item 8G? If not, please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you. Item 8H is a resolution approving the ambulance transfer investment.
H and I, H and I have been dealt with.
Okay, so, and then we go to item 8J, then, we look for, pardon me?
I have a technical request to speak on item 8H.
Yeah, we'd already approved it.
I understand it, but can I not?
Why don't you address, we'll have a section for the public to address the council after we're through. It's, thank you very much, sir.
Now, I don't follow the way it's going to be set up, but I understand.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there anybody here to speak on this item?
Item J.
Okay.
Gary?
I'm Gary Lacara.
Spell your last name, please.
L-A-C-A-R-A. 380 Forest Oaks Drive, Fairview, Texas.
Thank you very much.
We're just handing out the Ventura Plan. Understand that this is dynamic, not static. We've added a few things in here to address some of the concerns of various people in the board, specifically in marketing plan, both corporations are now authorized to do business within Oklahoma City. And forgive me, I'm trying to start where Victor left off, so I don't repeat everything here. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt me. Excuse me. And as I understand it, at that time, you were to the point of the tour route itself, whether it would be coned or not coned. Before I get into that, please accept my apologies for not showing up last time. I had the birth of my first grandchild, and that occurred two days before the meeting. It was difficult, my daughter ended up in the hospital for a number of days, but we're quite excited about it, and now we'll get back to business, so you understand why I wasn't here. We put two alternatives into the resolution and into our book. Alternative 1 was recommended by the Oklahoma City Police Department, specifically Major Ed Hill, and that was for the coning of Lincoln, 63rd, and Claussen, not necessarily in that order, and it was for the coning of one lane, and it was the lane closest And it was for the coning of one lane, and it was the lane closest to the curb in the direction of natural travel. Alternative 2, which was an alternative proposed, or at least discussed by the board, is no cones at all. So we really put both proposals in here for the board to choose from, the council to choose from, because we didn't know which one to go with, and we will be fully compliant with whichever you choose and want to have here. We project... Page 23 are the two alternatives. Page 23, and I believe 24. We project somewhere between 1,000 and 3,000 riders. We are concerned, and I think the police department was concerned also, with separating traffic from the cyclist. And if any of you cycle, and I've said this many times before, the one thing that is most important to a cyclist is the car over their shoulder, because the car is thousands of pounds versus a couple hundred pounds. And they're always worried whether they're going to be clipped, run over, et cetera. You have a number of tours in this town, some cones, some not. The Red Bud has some cones. The one last weekend had no cones. And again, we're willing to comply with either one. Other things before the board. We now have signed agreements with two organizations, the Oklahoma City Community Foundation and the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club for the donation proceeds for the benefit of the tornado relief fund from the ride. And I'm open to questions.
Gary, where is that information about the charities?
The information for the charities is being handed up right now. Any other questions while that's being handed out?
Yes, Gary?
Quick question. Josh, you go. Where do we stand today on the recommendation the sports consortium has looked at this?
The recommendation of the sports consortium hasn't changed. And it was actually, this new amendment to their plan was actually something that was briefly discussed at the sports consortium, that they could possibly change their plan to a plan that has less coning, and that they were willing to explore that at that time. But in the First Amendment that they had supplied this past week, which was why the memo was written and that the memo is based on, actually created another route, which is pretty much, was pretty much the same plan. It still very specifically excluded traffic from ever traveling in the same lanes on any of the route throughout the tour. And that included two-lane roads. And as Victor had expressed to you in the last meeting, they were not interested in any lane closures. And so he kind of contradicted the First Amendment that they turned in, that the memo is based on, was based on that new recommendation that they made, that they said they were going to do no lane closures, but the descriptions that they put in there still prohibited traffic from flowing in the direction of the event on those lanes. Am I describing that correctly?
If I may. When we originally proposed, we proposed closing roads. At Josh's suggestion, we moved to closing lanes. And then we further moved down the road to coning off some lanes. We always had rolling openings and closures of roads, so the whole route wouldn't be closed at once. And what we proposed last, which was last week, was only coning off the right-hand lane on four-lane roads, two lanes either way. We never considered both lanes, except at the very beginning, but because of the numbers that we projected here after a while, it just didn't make sense. So now we're down to whether we have cones on three roads, or whether we don't.
Okay, let me ask you...
Sorry, councilman, that's the new amendment that you're seeing today.
Okay, and let me tell you what's prompted some of these questions, and if I can get through this with the dry eyes or not. But the Spinning Wheels Tour, which we had in supporting the children's center that my Rotary Club supports, had an unfortunate experience Saturday, where, and what I, from the information I've read, an experienced rider was killed because his bicycle hit something and caused him to flip out into a lane of traffic, and a truck pulling a boat hit him and killed him. And this has given me concern if that changes. So that's the background of why I'm asking these questions. Will a cyclist ever be on your proposed route the way it is right now, on a street where he doesn't have, or she doesn't have, full use of the lane? Will he ever be sharing a lane during this tour?
Yes, but only on two-lane roads where there's one lane in one direction.
Okay.
For example, the entrance road to Stars and Stripes is a two-lane road. They'll have the right-hand lane for about 100, 150 feet. There are a number of other roads in the turn-by-turn directions, and I'm certain that you recognize some of those roads, where the cyclist will be going along on the same lane. However, there are a couple of things that come into play here and differentiate the situation you're talking about. I did a little research. Number one, it was a non-coned road, and I understand that. But the cyclist's tire caught in the pavement crack, or whatever you call it, the expansion joint between two lanes, and he flipped to his side. If we stay in just the right-hand lane and do not cross the two without, and that'll be prevented by cones, or in a single-lane road, they would never get to that point because they're going into oncoming traffic, which I think was the case here, that those kinds of accidents will not occur. The second thing that we do, the Red Bud, for example, this past year, somebody broke their collarbone. While they say it's not a timed event, they leave a clock up there with timing. We are not timed at all, which means people tend to go along at their own pace. The average pace of a cyclist is 12 miles an hour. Walking is somewhere around 3. We plan the route for 5 miles an hour, which means there's no time pressure to get through the route. We will also pick up the people behind. Couple other things. We will have EMTs or an ambulance service ready to go. We'll have 34 police along this route, which will be stationed along the way. So the major intersections are all covered, and it's managed. In addition, we will have many volunteers handling cross-road traffic. The expectation here is frankly, the drivers here are fairly polite. This was truly an accident, an unfortunate situation. But at the end of the day, the polite drivers are going to allow cyclists to go by. And finally, despite the death that occurred in that cycling ride, cycling is still much safer than walking on the street, driving on the street, or running on the street. It's just one in a million things that happen that day. Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, staff are going through the reports, and hearing, different discussion that has occurred over some time. I do not feel comfortable with this. A good chunk of it is in Ward 7. I do not feel comfortable with it, and so I'm going to actually move for denial.
We have a motion for denial. Did I miss anything prior to entering the room about motions or anything like that?
No, I just wanted to ask...
That's the motion on the table? Yeah.
Just wondering, the 34 police, these are off-duty?
Could we get a second, and then we can continue discussions?
Sure.
Oh, second.
Okay. I just wanted to understand, the 34 police are off-duty, or...
Off-duty. We pay them privately. They'll be drawn from the Oklahoma City Police Force in Nicholas Hills.
Okay.
And I guess if I could just make a couple of comments to, along the lines of Larry's, I just, I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said, but for the purposes of those that are watching and might be a little confused about this. This request to put on this event did come before the Oklahoma City Sports Consortium on two different occasions. There were modifications to the plan. The second time it came forward, I think as I stated last week, many of the questions that we had, that the consortium had posed, had not been fully answered, and there was a unanimous recommendation to this board not to approve. We voted to defer last, two weeks ago, and so now we're down to August 13th with a proposed event date of September 29th. In our consortium meeting, we discussed the timing in your Dallas event and the reason for pulling the plug in Dallas, and it was because we didn't have enough time to adequately pull off the event. I'm very concerned at this point that from August 13th to September 29th, we're not going to get there. I think a second point that's important to make is that I commend you, commend you for receiving two letters of support from the charities, because those were lacking up until this morning. But we know that it's going to take, I mean, by your words, it's going to take 500 riders to just break even. You're projecting between 1,000 and 3,000 riders. Our Red Bud event, which is more than 10 years old, has never had more than 1,500 riders. So the expectation that our charities will receive much of anything at all out of 50% of the net proceeds is of concern to me. I would like to also congratulate you for getting Steve Schlegel to sign on, not just as a provider of a vehicle, but as a consultant to you, and he does a very good job. But in terms of being responsible for the events in this city and the reputation of our city, I'm also going to vote to deny the request.
Well, can I address some of your concerns, if you don't mind?
Certainly.
First of all, we addressed the three reasons why the consortium denied the second time, and part of it was the letters that you now have from the two foundations. Another one was whether Cyclacity would be authorized to do business within Texas, I mean Oklahoma City. And we had filed that way back in June, and they were just plain slow, and it just happened to come out. In terms of PR and the ride itself and getting the riders, when you do the Red Bud, you have access to email lists, et cetera, but it's all local within the city. We do PR, and we'll do it from Houston up to St. Louis, to El Paso, out to Little Rock. And we expect to pull people in beyond that. With Dallas, when that failed, it failed because the police department in Plano refused to even discuss the issue, and they were along the route. We are now replanning that route to not include Plano. Now, we expect, and this is based on experience, and I've been in other rides that had this experience, that 20% of the people will come in from out of town. That means that your hotels will have rooms, your rental cars, your restaurants, et cetera. These are people that are new to Oklahoma City, may know Oklahoma City, want to be introduced to it, et cetera. These are the middle-income and upper-income riders. So they're the people that will spend the money inside this city. I understand some of your concerns, but with the interest we already have, and we have about 1,400 people with interest in it now, we don't foresee any problem getting to 500, for example, as a minimum. We really expect to get up closer to the 3,000, because we haven't opened registration yet. In Dallas, we did open registration, but we left the money in the dedicated account for refunds.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? I'll give you the final words. Is there anything else you'd like to say before we vote?
Well, look, you know I put a lot of work into this, and I understand with the consortium, we were the first ones through it, basically, this kind of event. And we've answered every question now. In all fairness, we've only asked to be treated like every other ride, every other event in Oklahoma City. And at this point, we have done everything plus what they have asked for. So I'm asking for you to prove it. I'm asking you to take that chance, and it really is a chance, you're insured, there are releases, et cetera. And I frankly doubt, and this isn't talking with Steve Schlegel, that there are any other events that have gone to this professional length in terms of event plan, budget, et cetera, to put on an event. We know what we're doing, and it's not doomed to failure.
All right, ready to vote? The motion is to deny. Yeah, Ed?
The motion is to deny.
Yes. So a yes vote is to deny then. Cast your votes. Application is denied.
Thank you.
On to item 8K. It's a request for an event, Plaza District Festival, to be held September 28th on Northwest 16th Street. And Kristen is here to tell us more about it.
Good morning. We're excited to host the 2013 Plaza District Festival on September 28th. And we're going to have over 50 visual artists line 16th Street, a list of talented Oklahoma performers and bands, and a day to celebrate our progress in the Plaza District. We'll have tons of kids' activities and food trucks, and it's just a way to celebrate our progress and the talent we have in our Oklahoma artists and performers. So I hope you guys can bring your families out to enjoy the day.
Move approval.
Second. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Kristen. All right, on to item 8L, and this is a revocable permit for the Run for More Hope. And we have two people that have signed up to speak today. Jennifer Lambrecht, Stephanie Shannon.
Yes.
Oh, these are all first names. Stephanie and Shannon and Crystal. Yes, and we will need y'all's name and address for the record.
I'm Jennifer Lambrecht, 47, 16, Persimmon Court, Norman, Oklahoma.
And I'm Shannon Lack, 3806 Peterbrook Court, Norman, Oklahoma.
Okay. Well, tell us about your event.
Okay. Well, we're really excited about it. It's Run for More Hope. We're going to do a one-mile fun run, and a 5K is at Early Wine YMCA Park. We're going to start in the Y. They will come out, they're going to run two times around the trail, so we won't have to close off the roads. And then they're going to finish back at the Y. After that, we're going to have like a fun fest. It's geared towards back to school, so, you know, we want lots of kids to come. We're going to have face painting, inflatables, everything's free, free food, and then we're going to end the night in fireworks.
And then, all of the money benefits tornado victims, so 90% of that will be, it will be split 10 ways evenly. Nine, 90% will go to the families that lost children in the May 20th tornado, and the other 10% will go to the Restore More Project teacher organization. And then, we currently have raised around $35,000 so far, and so we consider ourselves to be really successful, and we're very excited, and we have 500 runners signed up currently.
Do you have a board? Who determines who receives money and who doesn't?
Well, we've printed it publicly in the newspaper, just for accountability, and then we will make public donations in all of our... We've also made it known to the media that everything is transparent, and we are open to media or anyone that wants to oversee or look at our transactions. But we will make every donation public, just for accountability. We've already printed as well the 90% and 10% split evenly. So we're very transparent and open.
Okay, and some of the money will go to the more public schools, or something to help teachers in the more public schools?
Yeah, it's the Restore More Project Teacher Fund. They, their goal originally was to get $500 to each teacher that lost their classroom. However, they surpassed that, and now their goal is to give $1,000 to each teacher that lost their classroom in the three different schools.
All right, thanks very much. Send Ward 5. David, do you want to make a...
Well, before I make a recommendation, I would like to make a suggestion, if you haven't already. Parking is a problem at Early Wine, and I would suggest that you contact the churches around there, St. Andrews...
Can I interject on that? That's a great point that you bring up. We have about five different parking lots that are listed on our website, where we've received permission from the churches. And then we also have, the transportation department, I think, is bringing in two large signs that will be blinking, and it will say, "Please do not park on the grass." And then it'll also alert travelers on May Street that they will have an increase in traffic that day specifically. And then the YMCA, also Early Wine, we have reserved their parking lot as well. And they're going to be using their shuttle buses to shuttle back and forth as well.
Okay, Josh, did you...
And councilman, I would like to thank this group publicly, because when they presented at City Services, they were very quick to change their plan, really, to kind of align it with what the city staff was telling them about, concerns about a late-night event in that area on those busy streets. So they decided to move the plan inside of the park, so thank you guys for doing it.
I am encouraged, Your Honor, that it's going to be held completely on the park. We've got a great trail at Early Wine, and so we won't be pat, you know, getting out on the streets and things, so... Safety, and I think it's a great opportunity to showcase, I think, the best park in Oklahoma City. So I'm really pleased about this. And it's, you know, it's one of two or three events we have in Ward 5, so I certainly want to see it be successful, and I do recommend approval.
All right, is there a second?
We also have to, we have private security also that...
We also have to, we have private security also that we've hired from the Oklahoma City Police Department as well.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Yay!
Thank you.
All right, we're on to item 8M, and this is, deals with the car rental facility at the airport, and Mark Cranenberg is here to lead us through the presentation.
Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Department. To go along with this item, I have a presentation this morning. Very much appreciate the opportunity to bring forward today the final plans for the consolidated rental car facility at Will Rogers World Airport, and also to acquaint you with the business terms that were negotiated with the rental car industry. This project was designed by C.H. Guernsey. On Guernsey's team was PGAL, which is a recognized industry consultant in the development of consolidated rental car facilities. And this project is out to bid, and bids are scheduled to be open on September the 4th. The overhead view that you see, you note that the new consolidated rental car facility will be located on South Meridian Avenue on Airport property, just across generally from the Southwest Airlines Reservation Center between Southwest 54th Street and Airport Road. This is a very good location that has two distinct advantages. One is the transport time from the terminal at the airport to the new facility is just about three minutes, and PGAL says that it's one of the shortest transports in the country from a terminal facility to a facility such as this. The other distinct advantage is that it's very intuitive for rental car returns. Many of our customers will return via Airport Road, turn on South Meridian Avenue, and drop right into the new facility using a high-speed D-cell lane to turn in, and not have to go down and compete with all of the other vehicle congestion that they typically have in the terminal complex area, and also possibly being unfamiliar with the parking garage. This is an operational layout. You've seen this before in the airport's budget presentation in June, has the primary components of the facility that was identified in a planning study that was done a few years ago. If you'll picture Meridian on the bottom portion of your screen, you'll see in the purple that we have an inner loop road. This is where the buses will enter the facility and drop off and pick up passengers at the customer service building, which is identified in blue. The area around the customer service building in yellow represents the ready-return spaces. This is where the customers will pick up cars to rent and also drop them off to return. There are 900 spaces in this ready-return area, and this will meet a planning horizon for us 15 years and beyond. We currently have ready-return spaces of only 400, so you can see that we're very short in even meeting our demand today, so this sets us well up for the future. Also, all of these areas will be canopied, so they will be covered for the convenience of the passengers, the customers, and also the rental car industry to protect their cars. You see the middle loop road, which is going to be used by customers who will be either leaving the facility after they rent the vehicle or dropping off into the respective counter or rental car service area. The orange area, which is much larger, represents a fleet storage area, which is comprised of about 1,500 spaces, and it also has four service sites, which I'll talk a little bit about later. This color-coded layout sort of represents the complexity of negotiating this agreement with nine different companies. You'll see the companies are in the upper right-hand corner of your slide with a corresponding color code. That code can be transposed into the customer service building, the ready-return area, and also the storage areas where they have associated service sites. So this represents where the lease areas are that all of the nine companies will operate. Inside the customer service building, they will operate as individual brands, but in the service area or the storage area, they will be co-located with their family of brands. And these allocations were based on 2012 market shares. This is a diagram of the customer service building, 19,400 square feet. You'll see the canopies at the bottom of the diagram. This is the east side of the building where passengers will be dropped off using the common bus system, will enter in the east vestibule and either go left or right to their respective rental car counter. Each counter has associated back office space behind it. There are restrooms on each end, and there's also support space. The, there are vestibules also at the north, the west, and the south end, and this is to allow customers to exit the building and go to their ready-return spaces as quickly as possible. This is an interior concept of the building that's been designed. The views that you see in the larger pictures to the right are going into the building in the lobby, and looking to the left, you can see there's prominent wayfinding there with certain significant logos behind each rental car counter. And this is a terminal-quality building with regard to design and aesthetics. The materials brought elements from the terminal building, but they're also unique as a standalone building, and the emphasis is on efficiency and functionality for the rental car industry, but also to support the customers with easy access to the counters and wayfinding. I mentioned the service facilities in the storage area. This is a prototypical quick turnaround area, which is common in the industry. And you can see that each of these will have fueling islands, which are in the yellow, and they'll also have administrative space, they'll have wash bays, and they'll have maintenance bays with other support. These are designed with the rental car industries for their functional needs to turn around a car as quickly as possible so that we can get it back out on the ready line. This is a view from Meridian of the new facility, so this is likely the first time you've seen this picture. This is the area that you can see the common bus route, which will be dropping off the passengers in front of the building, and you can see that we do have the vestibules on the north and on the south, or the right or the left side respectively. There's also one again in the back so that customers can go to the ready-return area, and there is parking for public available in front of the building. To talk about the rental car program at the airport and where we've been and how we got here, we updated the concession agreement in 2011. This authorized the collection of the customer facility charge, which is really the cornerstone of the financing of this entire project. The $4.50 CFC, as I'll note the customer facility charge acronym, was approved by the trust in April of 2012. We began collecting last July of 2012, so we have one year of collections which are under our belt. All last year, in 2012, we negotiated the optimal facility size and plan layout for the building and for the entire 35-acre complex with the industry, and now lease agreements have been signed by the industry, and we're ready to open bids again on September the 4th. The rental car industry changes a lot, if you read the paper, and I mentioned before that there are nine brands that will be operating in the facility. They are operated by actually five family of brands, and so we actually only have five agreements. So we have Avis Budget Group, Enterprise Holdings, Hertz, DTAG, which operates Dollar and Thrifty, and then Advantage, which is an off-airport operator, was qualified by the trust in April to come on to the airport. So we'll have five brands of family operating in the facility. The basic terms of the new agreement, it is a new concession and lease agreement, which reflects the business deal and the operating requirements for operating in a facility of this size and magnitude. It is a 10-year term. After 10 years, we will bid out the spaces again, which is typically what we do in our existing operation. The rental car companies will lease certain premises, such as the counter and office space in the customer service building, the ready-return area, and the quick turnaround and the storage areas, like I mentioned. The airport trust will maintain the common areas, such as roadways, public parking, landscaped areas, and also maintain the customer service building. And a provision in the agreement exists where after five years, we will reallocate space because market shares do shift in the industry among the five major brands. We have a common dedicated shuttle bus program. The airport trust has already awarded a contract to Alliance Bus Group, so we have eight buses, 35-foot low-floor, CNG, ADA-equipped, will operate six with two spares, and these will be operated by an airport contractor, which will be identified in a future request for proposal. It will be an airport management contract, similar to what our public parking contract is today, and they will operate the maintenance and the buses. The rentals and fees paid for by the industry, they will continue to pay a concession fee, which is consistent with what they do today. The facility's operation and maintenance, this is the customer service building, utilities, landscaping, common grounds. They will pay a ground rent, which is prorated to all of the nine companies or the five family of brands throughout the 35 acres, and there's a contingent fee in the case that there are insufficient CFC revenues. The rental car companies do have a provision to pick up the contingent fee. Also, CFC revenues will cover the remaining portion of all of the program cost. In looking at the flow of funds for the customer facility charge revenues, first and foremost priority is that of the debt service, followed by the capital reserve fund. The capital reserve fund will pay for the replacement of buses. We anticipate the life of these buses to be 10 to 12 years, and it'll also pay for any capital improvements that will be done in future years. The trust has incurred expenses and is incurring expenses for consulting and architectural and engineering costs. We have a provision in the agreement after five years that the trust can recoup those expenses. And then CFC revenues will also pay for the final priority, which is for the shuttle bus operating and maintenance. These are projections for the customer facility charge collections and debt service. You can see that with our projected annual level of debt service is $3 million, and this is based on the anticipated cost of the facility. You can see that our CFC collections, though, are doing very well. In 2014 fiscal year, we're anticipating $4.5 million. I will say that from when we first started doing the transaction analysis in July of last year up until July of this year, we actually collected about $500,000 more, about 18%. And that's not even counting Advantage, which is coming on to the airport. So the debt service appears that it will be well taken care of, including the adequate bond coverage that is required, and also fund the other parts of the rental car program, especially such as shuttle bus operations and maintenance. Moving to the bonds specifically, which is before you today, this provides funding for the entire project. These are junior lien taxable bonds, which are backed by the trust credit, 30-year bonds, excuse me, annual level debt service, and the $4.50 rate will provide 100% coverage for the debt and any bond coverage. Two important points: the financing will have minimal impact to the airport trust overall debt service, and it preserves our capacity for doing future projects. So where are we today in the next steps? The agreements have been signed, which is a big step. The bonds anticipate being sold in September after the bids are open. We have meetings with rating agencies today and tomorrow. We hope that construction will begin in the next couple of months, with the date of beneficial occupancy to be anticipated the end of the first quarter of 2015. So very exciting project for the airport, for the industry, allows them to expand their operations in a growing Oklahoma City, but also provides value in customer service to our customers who are coming in from out of town. Thank you.
And the item before us today is a resolution approving the debt issuance of up to $50 million, although it's estimated at $44 at this time.
Your Honor?
Yes.
A couple of quick questions. Is this a moral obligation, the city? Do we have that clause?
No, it is not.
It is not, okay. And the second reason, why did we waive competitive bidding?
That would be an answer for the finance guys. That's why they're here.
Listen, Finance Director Kenny Suttl's coming up. This is what's called a story bond.
Yeah, this is just, that means we're doing this as a negotiated sale as opposed to a competitive sale. Again, we feel like it's a little bit of a story, it's a little bit of a, out of a normal type of bond issue that we do, so we felt like a negotiated sale would be the best way to do that, to get the lowest rate for us.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes. Your Honor, the projections indicate that it would certainly cover the debt service, but I'd like to add, you know, the airport trust is even going further in providing incentives for new non-stop flights, so I think the usage of the airport and thereby the usage of the rental car agency is only going to continue to increase year after year, so they're doing a great job out there.
Thank you.
And Mark, if I could, you know, my pet peeve is maintenance, so I appreciate all the focus. With a brand-new fabulous building like this, we need to make sure we keep it to the same standard, that we keep the upper level of the terminal, which is always looking great.
Yes, and your comment reminds me also, I want to remind that this project, the customer service building, we are also allocating 1% of the construction cost towards art. Thank you. All right. Mark, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We do need a motion?
Yes, we do.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8M. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct. You need to sit right here.
All right. Hold on just a moment. Roy, you want to speak on the salary continuation? Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. Mayor Cornett, members of the city council, special good morning, Ms. Coasey, Ms. Sawyer. Roy Stafford, 3901 South Portland Avenue, apartment 109. Excuse me. I'm going to give a little more added information. My phone number is 686-7645, and there's a reason for that, and I'll address it the next time I'm up. The reason for me getting up and addressing item 8N is I've got no problem with this young corporal's salary being extended. I have no problem with the other corporal, Boren or Parsons' salaries being extended. But what the purpose of me being here today is...
Do you remember the compression sock I mentioned a long time ago? $60 a throw.
And the reason that I'm mentioning my compression sock is some of my dealings with the police force. And the reason that I'm bringing it up is I will address that when I get up for citizens to be heard. But we, as men, have a responsibility that we are not living up to, and I'm not pointing out any specific person, but we, as men, have a responsibility to our city more and beyond streetcar system, taking the city on a diet. We have more responsibilities to our city than that. I was the first person to get to this female that fell out earlier this year, and Mr. Shidi, you're a physician, and Mayor Cornett, I know Mayor Cornett, wondered what I was whispering in her ear to get her to calm down. It's a secret. But I have no problem. These officers are taxpayer-receiving employees of the city, but we have a responsibility that we can't go back and teach these young gentlemen on the street morals. That was their parents' responsibility. But we have a responsibility as being in control of our city employees to instill in them and to remind them that they are public servants. They are not uniformed officers on the street, over inmates, like that type of control. So that's the only reason I wanted to point, and I'll address the rest of the things when I get up for citizens. Thank you.
Sure. All right, we have a motion on item 8N in a second. All right, cast your votes, and that passes unanimously. And similar on 8O, we do not need executive session. Don't take a motion to pass item 8O. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8P, I understand we do not need executive session.
Do not.
Okay. How about a motion there? Cast your votes on 8P. Passed unanimously. Item 8Q, I understand we do not need executive session.
Right, do not.
Okay, a motion then to pass it? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8R, I guess we do need executive session on this one.
Yes, please.
All right, a motion to move item 8R into executive session?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. An item moves to executive session. Item 8S has been struck. Item 8T is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, and are any items listed under 8T? I have a couple of people that have signed up. Okay. Danielle Jackson? I will need your name and address for the record, Danielle.
Field Box 16456, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City, 73113.
Okay, and what can you tell us about your claim?
I just gave everything to Ms. Frances Coasey. I gave her all my paperwork, so she should have everything, the pictures.
If you remember, two weeks ago, this item was deferred. I was going to research the clerk's records, which I did from May 2012 to May 2013, and a claim was not filed. And I asked Ms. Jackson if she had any proof that she had filed a claim, and I didn't receive anything. She did submit pictures of the estimate, which were done in September, but I could find no evidence that the claim was filed timely within the one-year period.
So the estimates was not enough, or?
Well, wasn't this a statute of limitations issue?
Yes.
Yeah, so the legal issue for us is that because your claim wasn't filed, or we don't have a record of it being filed, with this statute of limitations, we can't pay the fine, or we can't pay the claim.
Okay, so basically, I have a total loss, right?
I can't hear you.
I have a total loss on everything for him hitting my heart?
I'm just saying that we have to deny the claim based on the legal information that's presented to us.
Okay, that's mine.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Thank you, Danielle. Heather Vernon, Warren Vernon, you can both come up. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Heather Vernon, 8321 Northwest 33rd Street, Bethany, Oklahoma 73008.
Okay. What can you tell us about the claim that you filed?
We would just like reconsideration on the claim with all the evidence that was provided. I am the registered owner of the vehicle, and he happened to be driving it that day when I was at work. Pictures I submitted, the claim that we filled out, I would just like it to be reconsidered, and since he was the driver, he can state what happened.
Okay.
Well, my name is Scott. On that particular day, I was going down the road like normal, and one of the city dump trucks I got next to, but somehow we got hooked up and just kind of just going down the road together, and it just totally kind of wiped out my side of the vehicle. And the cop couldn't determine whose fault it was. And honestly, the police officer really didn't do his job that day. I'm not trying to say he was a bad cop or anything, but it seemed like he was in a big hurry. He didn't look at anything. He didn't measure anything. He didn't, either was a witness, he wouldn't take any statements.
The witness waited like thirty, forty-five minutes. This was right after the major tornadoes, and the witness stayed and waited, and the officer didn't feel the need to take his name, address, phone number, put in the report or nothing, and told him that he could go.
I tried to talk to the officer that came on the scene, and he just was not very responsive at all, you know, and like he was in a big hurry, right after the tornadoes, and I think all those guys were really busy.
Well, regardless of his work, tell us what happened.
I was going down the road, and it was a big dump truck, and what they were doing is going up and down Penn, clearing debris. And I was going to a doctor's appointment, and somehow, I don't even know how it happened. I was going down the road, minding my own business, and we just got hooked up. It was like I hooked up, well, there are some pictures right there.
Are you going the same direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, going in the same direction.
Did one of the vehicles cross the line?
No.
That separates the...
No. There are some marks of my vehicle tires on the other side, but that's because when I got hooked up, I got pulled over. And I don't even know how we got hooked up, because I always drive with both hands on the steering wheel, and we're just going down the road together, and next thing I know, I'm right hooked onto his vehicle, going, being pulled over.
Was the street not wide enough for the two vehicles?
I wouldn't say that was an issue, no. It was just a freaking nature thing, going down the road, all of a sudden, it was like we just got hooked up. And it was like nobody wanted to do their job, just like the officer, I'm not trying to say he was a bad cop or anything, it was just, no one hardly wanted to take pictures. I was like, take some pictures. I told the officer, I said, please, get your measuring thing out.
Measure skid marks.
Look at the skid mark.
What about the incident makes you believe that the city was at fault between the two vehicles?
Because I was like, I was going down the road, and I always, I mean, I was paying a teaching the best I could, like I always do, I almost don't feel like I was breaking the law or doing anything wrong. I was going down the road, and like anybody else would around here, and boom, it was like that fast, I was hooked up to him and being pulled over, and then somehow I got off, and nothing bad happened after that, but still, it was just maybe his truck is so big and wide, you know what I'm saying, and he can't tell if he's a little bit over or not, you know? And I don't feel like I did anything wrong that day. And then I got, you know, then the car's all torn up, and I had to tell her and explain her, and it was like, you know, I just tore the car up, you know? And then I submitted my claim, my pictures and everything like that, y'all told me to, and the city attorney denied it, and here we are today.
Okay. And maybe I can get some legal advice here from our staff?
Yes, Mayor, let me jump in here real quickly. We have the collision report. Both drivers told the officer that they thought that they had stayed in their own lane, so the officer could not determine the point of impact. If you go on those photos, if you go back to the one that shows the skid marks, that's probably the most one to look at. These are the skid marks of the claimant's vehicle. His vehicle was next to the curb, I believe, and then the city driver was on the outside or really on the inside lane, and the claimant was next to the curb. So these are the skid marks where the claimant was trying to stop, and it's really, as our last sentence or paragraph says, it's a conflict of fact. We can't really determine who was at fault. That's why.
If I felt like I did anything wrong, I wouldn't even be here today. I don't feel like I did a thing wrong, besides going down the road and getting hooked up with him, and it was a freaking nature-type thing. The cop himself, like he said, it was hard for him to determine whose fault it was. If somebody was at fault, whether me or him, I guess somebody would have gotten a ticket. I didn't get a ticket, he didn't get a ticket.
Yeah.
All I know is I got a lot of damage to my vehicle, and I just...
Yeah.
Decent out of that.
And were there any witnesses?
There was a witness, but the cop was not, the cop was not interested in talking to him at all.
Well, do you have anything from him?
I did not get anything from him. The reason why I didn't get anything from him is I was, well, I was trying to get to him, but I felt like the cop would have probably done that, because that's his job, you know what I'm saying, to get a statement or something from him, but he didn't, he didn't care about that witness there. And he was not a bad guy. It was some guy that saw it, pulled over, and wanted to try to talk to the cop and give him a statement. The cop didn't care what he had to say.
Okay, is there anything you want to add to what you've heard?
I believe Mr. Jordan has covered it. The officer couldn't find the point of impact, couldn't find any debris in the roadway to point to the point of impact and...
But legally, we do have the legal discretion to pay the claim if we chose?
Yes.
Within state law? Okay.
You do.
Comments from council or full rebut? We can pull this one out if anyone would like to? We can leave it on?
Just a technical question. Do they have the right to file a lawsuit against us, say, in district court, which...
They do.
You know, I don't mean to put this off to some other jurisdiction, but it's hard for us not being in the trial business to really make this kind of decision, at least it is for me. I just don't understand all the legal implications. And this would be a small claims case, and there's a form you get from the district court clerk that you fill out for a small claims action, and you just basically appear in front of the judge, and the judge makes a decision, one way or the other. It's real informal.
Did you have insurance?
Yes.
I had insurance, I mean, everything was legal.
But did you file a claim for the damage that was done on the vehicle?
It just had liability.
You just had liability, you didn't have collision insurance?
On the vehicle.
Okay.
Okay. Any opinions from council to pull this one, have it voted on separately? Yeah, Larry?
Just out of curiosity, do we have, Kenny, the right to split the difference on this?
Yes, you could.
Say that we don't know whether it's your fault or our fault, and so we'll pay half if that could be done?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Larry, I'd second the motion if you made that.
Can I just ask you, just looking at this picture, it looks like, it looks like the car goes into the middle lane. Do you remember how that happened?
Talking about that mark on the father's lane.
It looks like the skid marks goes out into the other lane and then back into this lane towards the curb.
She was talking to me.
I just want to point out, the skid marks are from the city dump truck, I don't know the right wording to use, and with my vehicle like latching on, him being pulled and him trying to go to the right to get away from them being attached, so...
Wait, can you say, can you add...
No, I mean, I...
Can you say your question again?
There's skid marks that are in, that are in this lane on the left, and then goes out into the lane on the right, and then comes back to the lane on the left. I'm just wondering if you remember how that would have transpired.
That's just for me, just kind of going down the road this way, as you can see, and then he's in the father lane, and I got pulled over. That's just being pulled over. That's not me going over there and then latching on to him, being my fault. That's just a matter of just somehow getting hooked up to his bumper and being pulled over. And the thing is about those dump trucks is those bumpers are huge, and there were some scratches on this front bumper, and they go farther out, and a little bit farther out than the vehicle, than they really need to. And I'm thinking that's probably why I got hooked on to at first, somehow, and then got pulled over, and then the rest of it kind of just scratched all the way down the vehicle.
And I would say that if it is the will of the majority of the council, we go back and try to settle this for 50/50. The best way to do that would just be to defer this for two weeks, and then we can get with the claimant and see if they're agreeable to that, and if they are, we just bring it back for, as an approval, for whatever.
I'll make that as a motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to defer this item for two weeks in our hopes that legal counsel can get with the claimants and come to an agreement. So the motion then is to hold this out and have it voted on separately?
Defer.
Defer, the vote, okay.
Can I ask...
The deferral?
Yes. There's another way to settle this today?
Oh, sure there is. We could vote on it today if you'd like.
I mean, you would just, I may vote, I'm guessing probably no, and then I'd defer not to.
We'll get a chance to defer it for two weeks. We'll take the defer.
The alternative, though, is that if we defer it for two weeks, you have an opportunity to negotiate with the city's attorney staff, you wouldn't have to come back. If you can negotiate a settlement, you don't have to come back. They'll be on for approval, and after it's approved, you'll just get a check. I think it works that way.
Yes, we actually have to bring it back. If council votes for this, I think we have some direction there. We can kind of read between the lines, and we're going to negotiate with you to settle this claim, and then we bring it back in two weeks for approval of the settlement.
My point is, though, you wouldn't have to come back again.
All right, let's vote on the deferral. Cast your votes. Deferral passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Kenny, can I ask a point of clarification? On the case before this, there was no dispute, we didn't dispute that we were in the wrong.
Right.
But there wasn't timely filing. Would we have had discretion?
Not on that. That's a matter of law. She had to file that claim form with the city clerk within one year of the date of the accident. Otherwise, it's legally barred. It's, you can't pay that.
All right, how about a motion on the rest of the docket? Cast your votes. Rest of those claims are denied. On item nine, it's claims recommended for approval. Has anyone here shown up hoping to speak under any item listed under item nine? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. James, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, I got a question about the, we talked about having kind of a workshop sort of thing. Has there been any increase? I mean, has that been planned or...
A follow-up workshop on the wellness centers.
So that...
A follow-up workshop on the wellness centers?
Yes.
I was hoping to get some consensus on that, and...
Pete and I talked last week, and I think the discussion goes on. I think what the city manager is hoping for is some sort of consensus from the council about what we want to do, what we want to discuss, if we have one. I think he's waiting for clear direction, and Pete and I talked and are trying to figure out how we can approach council and try to get some direction on that. That's kind of where it is. Nothing's been scheduled at this point, but the idea hadn't been shelled. Okay.
Thanks. Yeah. Well, in looking for consensus, I'd like to have one as soon as possible. I assume that you're, and what I heard was there was no reason not to do one, we talked about it, so I'd love to have one as soon as possible. Next Monday, we're going to have a sidewalk ceremony, or...
It's naturally sometime, I'm not sure it's Monday, but it could be.
Do we, now, have we had similar, like for bonds, sidewalk projects, do we have ceremonies or have we had any ceremonies on the 2007 street projects or sidewalks?
No, but we have on the MAPS three projects. On all MAPS projects, we've had it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Larry? Pete?
A couple of things. One, the, I want to express how much I enjoyed the youth council luncheon we had. I thought it was very good. I'm really looking forward to this next year with the youth council. I'm really pleased with the two young people I have, and I think it's going to be a really good year. Second, I want to be sure everybody is aware of a dedication next Tuesday at 9:30 at the airport. It's on the ground floor there between the baggage claim area and the parking garage. We're dedicating a plaque to Jim Scott, who's a former planning commissioner and former city councilman and former highway commissioner, who was a long-term, longtime served on the airport trust. In fact, he was the first publicly appointed trustee on the airport trust. When the airport trust was originally formed, it had kind of a funky makeup, as most of our trusts did back in the 50s and 60s when they were created. And Jim was the first person to be a public appointee to that trust. Most of the money for the plaque is raised from private donations, and it's going to be at 9:30 next Tuesday, a week from today, on the off day. Be nice to go honor a former councilman and someone that contributed a lot, a long number of years to service to the city. Just want to make sure everybody knows we're going to do it.
David? Okay, Meg?
Mayor, I'll be quick. I just wanted to recognize the Bed House Foundation Friday evening, there was a fabulous event down on the river. Our canoe kayak group was, had brought in youth canoe and kayakers from all over the country, getting ready to train, or training in Oklahoma City for serious competition. And these young people, some of them under 16, all the way up to 23 years old, we heard probably four or five that were moving to Oklahoma City and choosing to pursue their sport here and go to college here. It was a really exciting event, and those, if you all haven't been down in the evenings on the river to see that, I think first of the MAPS projects that was dedicated, the lights on the river, it's absolutely fantastic. And I'd also just like to congratulate the Hispanic Chamber. A number of us were out at the fairgrounds a week ago Saturday for their Hispanic Expo. I think it was the best one I've attended in the last five or six years. Great crowds, very, very well done, and really recognizes the exciting growth in that market in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August the 20th, which is next Tuesday, I'm having a town hall on MAPS for Kids and MAPS three beginning at 7:00 PM. And again, that's going to be on next Tuesday, August the 20th, and Metro Tech beginning at 7:00 PM. And the discussion, MAPS for Kids and MAPS three, and I want to thank David Todd for being my special guest. Also, on last week, I had the opportunity to tour Feed the Children and to see the work that they are now trying to do for as domestic work, and especially work here in Oklahoma City. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have where teachers can come in and get school supplies. So again, I want to thank Feed the Children for what they are now doing in the inner city, in Oklahoma City. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pat? All right, city manager reports?
Yes, we have Rob Mackenzel here this morning for the first to talk to us a little bit about a status report on 1% for the arts.
Thank you. Good morning. Anna Thomas is with me today. She'll be assisting me with the presentation. She's a recent grad from the University of Oklahoma's Art Program and is interning with us in the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs until January. So she'll be giving to you two different documents. One, I have a slide on the 1% projects themselves, but you can't really read it, and so this will give you a little more detail so that you can read. And the other one is a good leave-behind document about what public art does. And so Anna will bring up the PowerPoint. So the 1% for art ordinance was established in 2009, and prior to that time, since about 1980, there was a 1% for art ordinance, but it said that you may spend a 1% for art, not that you shall. So this became a requirement at that time. And the ordinance applies to any new building, park development, or major renovation undertaken by the city or any of its trusts and authorities, and those that are constructed or erected on public right-of-way or on... or on property owned by the city, these are very important details, utilizing public funds. So the works of art can either be incorporated into the building projects or they can be standalone works of art that we often refer to as an art, a public art in a public place. I want to go ahead too and tell you, at that time, on the same year, 2009, the city commissioned a cultural plan. And they commissioned the plan from the Cultural Development Corporation of Central Oklahoma because the city did not have an arts, an Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs at that time. So the plan was completed in 2010 and it relies on five different initiatives. And initiative number two in this slide, maximize what exists. This is one that particularly pertained to the 1% for art ordinance that the city had recently adopted. And it recommended to the city that they hire an advocate for arts and culture on city staff, that the city update zoning and permit policies to accommodate the arts community, which a lot of progress has been made, and also that the city undertake a comprehensive public art master plan, which I'll talk to you about in just a minute. So the liaison position was established in the city's budget in 2012. And the position is directly under the guidance and supervision of the planning director in the planning department. And the main roles for the position are to assure and guide cultural planning and plan implementation, to oversee the arts commission and its activities, and to serve as a liaison and a consultant to the various departments, trusts, and authorities of the city. And then there's also those investments by the private sector. So I work directly with providing technical assistance to those people in the private sector that want to make donations of public art. So the infrastructure that needed to be established to create a very strong foundation for the program was first to evaluate the arts commission themselves. And several interviews were held, interviews were held with each one of the commissioners to understand what they felt they needed to do a good job for the city and get their ideas on moving the program forward. The other thing we found in looking at this was we had a lot of great works of art in the city's public art collection, but people didn't really know where they were or what the history was behind those works of art and also who the artists were. And this was a very important thing to help people to appreciate that. And also if we have visitors to the city, for the public to have access to those. So the Innismuch Foundation has provided an intern this summer. Her last day was last week. She's gone back to Vanderbilt. But this, the intern Molly Brown worked all summer long on identifying all the artwork and loading it up to a site called Culture Now, Museums Without Walls. And this is a product after 9/11 that the American Institute of Architects established this website as part of their foundation work. And they made it a worldwide platform for public art. So now you can see the works of art that have been identified so far in the city's collection on the website. And you can also see 150 important points of architecture also loaded onto this website that the American Institute of Architects gave us this information. Then since 2011 also, one of the things that the arts commissioners were very, were a little bit concerned about were issues with conservation and preservation. A lot of work was donated to the city in the 50s and 60s, and there had been very little done for ongoing maintenance. And so in April, there was a conference in Oklahoma City at the Skirvin Hotel. And the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs applied for a grant that I will be bringing before you in two weeks to consider accepting assistance with a conservation plan for those works and moving forward on any new works in the collection. And then the last piece, the comprehensive public art master plan, the Cultural Development Corporation came before you in January and requested a resolution of support for a grant application to the National Endowment for the Arts for 2012, our town grant. And we found out last month that that was awarded. And so the Cultural Development Corporation in the city will move forward and we will hire a consultant to work with us on that plan. And it will take approximately nine months to bring back some recommendations about policies and other possibly physical master plans and ways to move the program forward. So how do we select artwork under the 1% program? There was a selection procedure that was agreed to under the original maps that was adopted by the city. And we use that very same, same process. We determine a job and a purpose for the art, whether it helps people navigate to a certain place in the facility, whether it, it's not just necessarily a work of art that just stands out, but that it means something specific to the facility or to the people that use the facility. And then we carefully work, I work with the department head that's responsible for the project to formulate a selection committee of very important stakeholders. These might be design architects, people that will operate the facility because they'll be concerned with things like maintenance, maybe trustees that will be, you know, have to talk with their other decision makers about what the project does and how it was selected. And then we run a two-stage selection process that takes approximately nine months to carry out. And this is through negotiation and contract. But the first stage, we request qualifications from artists and we take approximately four hours normally. There can be anywhere from 10 entries to 60 entries. We look through every image and it's a blind jury so that no one can see who the artists are and these artists are selected. And then they're paid a stipend to come back and present at a second jury meeting to those same stakeholders. And then their recommendation is moved forward to the arts commission for a recommendation and then into contracting. This is the handout that Anna handed out to you. Right now, we have 16 projects in the queue. How we know about these projects is that we are alerted from Public Works that these projects are moving forward. And then that way, we know what the 1% amount is and who the project manager is that will be working with that. Go ahead. Here's some examples of some of the works, the projects that we've been working on so far. There was a maintenance building on Exchange Avenue Landing. It was a $5,500 award and the artist selected for this was Stan Carroll. And the work is Ohr Salute. This is a beacon to those who want to visit that facility. There's a sidewalk that will be next to it and it helps people find out how to access the Devon Cruisers on the Oklahoma River. Unfortunately, the foundation isn't poured because it's been raining too much. So we have electrical lines to it and we're waiting for the rain to stop. Lincoln Golf Course Clubhouse. Two different marketing studies were performed before these final designs were, I think, brought back to council. And there is a market to use this facility for private events. So the job for the art for this facility is a large-scale public artwork that will hang from the ceiling or beyond the entry wall. And this will make this facility unique and sought after for those events. The artists for this, the three shortlisted artists will view the facility as its construction is underway in October, and they will compete with their final presentations in November. Consolidated Rental Car Facility, you just heard the director of the airport talk to you about this facility. While we can't reveal, the artist was selected by the selection committee and will be recommended to the airport trust in September. And then it'll go forward to council and then contracting, excuse me, arts commission and contracting. And then the Arts District Parking Garage, this is the big construction underway just south of this building. Three artists have been shortlisted for this. We're very excited about this work because it'll be new media work in the pedestrian concourse at ground level. It'll make that area feel very lively at all times of day and it'll be one of the first of its kind in Oklahoma City. It's a 25-foot by 140-foot-long pedestrian crossing. And so it won't be your usual crossing when we see these works. So the next steps, we'll be hiring consultant to undertake the comprehensive public art master plan, developing internal policies and procedures for all the different groups that will be securing 1% for art projects, a lot of public education and continuing access, the public's access to the collection. Public Information recently also set us up for social media with a Facebook site so that we can report regularly to the public about what is going on in the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs. There's ongoing cultural planning and implementation. We're on initiative number five and the cultural plan implementation, next steps on that will be economic impact studies of the arts and then looking forward to the next cultural plan. And then there's always the ongoing technical support. The work that we're looking forward to right now is Vince Gill, the statue of Vince Gill being installed in Bricktown, and then Compass Rose by Owen Morrell in Regatta Park later in October. We'll be doing a monthly report to the arts commission where this sheet will be updated and will be added to every month and then biannually a report to council. So does council have any questions?
Yeah, of the, of the work that you outlined that's underway, how many are local artists or local firms or?
On, on the work that's underway right now, Stan Carroll is a local artist. On Lincoln Golf Course, the three shortlisted artists, two are local teams and one is from out of state. On the Consolidated Rental Car Facility, the artist that will be recommended is from out of state. And then on the pedestrian walkway, the all three shortlisted artists are from out of state.
I know, Jim, I ask you the same question every time, but is it state law that prohibits preference to local artists or?
That's a great question for Kenny Jordan because it's different on competitive bidding. There's charter requirements, there's state law competitive bidding, and this doesn't fall in competitive bidding. So I'd like to defer to Kenny on that. But there's different things out there.
Okay.
Often too, Councilman Shutey, if in these projects, like the one that will be recommended for the airport, that artist specifically states, even though he's from out of state, that he will hire a local artist to assist him with installation because he wants to make sure, I think that's the norm, on some of the larger projects, that you might see an artist who has more worldwide recognition, but they often will look for a local project manager, which helps, helps us locally when we're grooming our artists for larger projects.
Your Honor, David? I've got several points, but I'd like to begin with Ed's question. In general, I would prefer utilizing local vendors, especially for construction-type projects. But when it comes to work of art, I'd say why limit ourselves to that? And having just sat on a jury, just being exposed to the various ideas was really great. And I'd hate to limit ourselves because I think, and this is going to get into a commentary, with the one up at the rental car facility, the work of art will be a destination point. I will go there just to see that. And we can't say at this point which one was selected. But I think it's so unique that I would go out there and I'd take people just to show them the work of art. So I'm just saying, I'd hate to limit us to just local residents because one of the requirements is that the artist captures something unique to Oklahoma City in their design. And while we may think only us Oklahoma Cityans truly know Oklahoma City, they all have been exposed to us in some capacity. So I would just caution us on trying to limit it to local artists. But again, I do think, or I hope, each time we look at a new work of art, we will think in terms of it being a destination point, that it'll be so unique, so interesting, that people will go out of their way. Who would go out to a rental car agency just to go out there to see it? I mean, I've been through so many, I'd prefer not to. But this, and I'm trying to build up some excitement to the announcement, Robbie.
Is that a bar too high?
No, I think once people get to see it, it'll be nice. And I would take that a step further and suggest that we as a council require each member of the council to set on at least one jury. I had the opportunity, since I serve on the airport trust, to do this. But I think even if we don't necessarily set on a trust or some other organization, that we have a resolution, if nothing else, if not a true requirement, that each member of the council. Because I think once you go through that selection process, you'll see all the work and effort that these artists, as well as Robbie's office, go through and try to make the best work of art presented to the citizens. And these works of art will be here 50, 100 years hopefully after we are. I'm not suggesting this is some type of legacy, but people hopefully will look back and say, boy, these city leaders really had the right idea 50 and 100 years ago. And my final comment is that we also look at the 1% requirement of 1%. Again, in our case with the rental agency, I wish we could have doubled that and have a 2% requirement. We could have possibly had two works of art or just really provided a tremendous one. But I think with what we've got, it's going to be a great work of art. And also have a minimum of at least $10,000. So if 1% falls below $10,000, we have a minimum requirement. If it's a project that we're, you know, concerned about, we have at least a $10,000 investment in the work of art. And I would, maybe not now, maybe after every member of the council has set on a jury selection, then we vote about increasing that from 1 to 2%. But I really think it goes well beyond our lifetime. Thank you. Pete?
I am absolutely fascinated that we are talking about 2% for the arts. I was here in the 80s when Jackie Carey fell on a sword for the idea of making the may, shall. And to see 20 or 30 years later that we're now talking about not only mandatory 1%, but even having a conversation about mandatory 2% is just shows how far we've come. I often think about, this is my day to think about people that served on the council a long time ago, I guess. But Jackie Carey was such a, she was a member of the arts commission. She was such a great advocate for the arts. I mean, she really pushed the 1%, the made a shall thing. And I think often, sometimes we forget about people like her. I mean, she's, I want to take this opportunity to thank her family that still live in Oklahoma City for providing the kind of leadership she provided in this area 30 years ago because it has made so much difference in Oklahoma City. The, I really like the idea, and I'm not sure we couldn't consider that relatively soon, raising the minimum. Because the minimum does, does say a lot about what you can do. I mean, if it's 1%, it's 1% of a very small amount, then 1% doesn't get you hardly anything. So raising it a minimum, I think, might be a step in the right direction. I think 2%, if she's listening to me now, she'd be upset with me for saying this, but I think 2% may be a leap in terms of what we're trying to accomplish with infrastructure. But it, I'm just struck by how, what a significant change in 30 years it has been that someone could advocate for that like she did 30 years ago and it just virtually fall on deaf ears. And now here we are, talking about doubling it. It's really kind of a nice thing.
Mayor, if I could just, two comments. One is I think that this office has come so far, you know, like Pete saying, we're talking about this, to talk about creating a cultural liaison in the city, I think was a bit of a surprise to people. And I think your office has done a great job. So thank you, Russell and Robbie, for that. And I think I had something else I wanted to say and I don't remember what it was. Congratulations on great work.
All right. Do we have a, do we have a definition of what is a work of art?
I hope not.
I mean, I'm sitting here with, I think I'm the only one with a bachelor's of fine arts and, you know, it's a very vague term, a work of art.
Yeah, that's what we have an arts commission.
I get their definition.
It is defined in the ordinance.
Oh, is it?
Yes. And I can send that over to your office. And then we do expect that conversation to, to go, be ongoing with the comprehensive public art master plan because there are other cities that define it a little differently than we have in the past.
Yeah. Because I mean, in most of these projects, I mean, the actual project to me is a work of art. So where do you, you know, what kind of, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out where that line is on what this is. So, yeah, that's, that's my two cents.
So, yeah, that's my two cents.
I remembered my question, and it's how do you reach out to get international artists to submit proposals for our work?
One of the biggest ways is through the Americans for the Arts. It's part, there's a public art network, and artists from all over the world subscribe to their notifications, and it's free to all governments and all private sector projects. So that's one of the biggest ways. And then we have on our city website, we have our own subscription list. You know, we started this office a year ago, and we have over 300 subscribers, and we often see how often those are passed on. And then we also, now that we use Facebook, you also get reports on how many people you reach with that. So there's a variety of ways. But we do not pay for advertising at this point.
Okay. Thanks for your work. So.
On Ed's question, on whether or not we could limit the request for proposal to local artists, I'd actually need to research that, but I'd point out that it's a...
Or not just limit, but give preference, that it's a variable. Tie goes to the local artist.
We can research that and come back with you. I'd point out that a work of art is a professional service contract. You know, you're getting a unique product, it's not really something that's subject to specification, so it is not even required legally to be, go out for proposals. I mean, you could tell the city manager, go out, we direct you to go out and bring back an artist, an Oklahoma artist with a work of art to be located here, and you could do that, I believe. But let me research that and get back with you.
An aspect to making some kind of local preference, and I agree completely with what David said, but the other side of that is you really don't build your local arts community without it to some extent. I mean, it is, it would be an incentive for artists to locate here and local arts to continue to participate. So it's not just purely one side or the other, there are facets on both sides of it. But I agree with what David said, I don't think, probably, but maybe some kind of a tiebreaker rule or something, maybe.
All right. Next up?
Next up is an update on some council priorities. When the council adopted the last updated priorities last September, the council asked that we bring back updates on some strategic measurements on those priorities. So today, we are reviewing two of those priorities. One is to develop a transportation system that works with all citizens, and the second is to support high-quality public education, community health and wellness. And with that, we're going to start with the transportation system with Eric and Rick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Rick Cane and I are pleased to present this morning on the transportation system that works for all citizens, and so you're actually going to see a portion of the slides, the first half for more street and sidewalk, and the second half for more transportation. We go to the next slide. You'll see the priority indicators that councils identify the percent of citizens satisfied with the condition of city streets. We've just received some information from the last citizen survey, and this has come up as priority one for our citizens. The number of miles of trails and sidewalks constructed is another priority indicator. And then we move into the transportation items, public transportation ridership, number of riders per service hour, and then average commute time here in Oklahoma City. When we look at the citizen survey, and we look at the percent of citizens satisfied with the condition of streets, I've listed here the last three years of citizen surveys. You're actually going to see a slight decline. You're going to see a 42, a 38, and now this most recent information, 35%. And let me qualify the response by saying that the survey that went out actually asked our citizens their feelings, whether they were very satisfied or satisfied with the quality of streets on major city streets, one question, residentials as a second question. Now, what you see here is a combined or an average response. We didn't report on those separately. But one of the things that also concerns us is being a top priority and the amount of construction that we have ongoing in Oklahoma City is why we may see this continued decline, at least in the survey results. Got a couple of slides I'm going to show you in just one minute, but we think that with the amount of construction, with the inconveniences that may be caused to our citizens currently, that may be one of the factors that is starting to show this trend. And so when we look at pavement control index numbers, you're actually going to see those numbers increasing. Now, remember PCI, Pavement Control Index, is a score of 0 to 100. It's a quality of the street. We annually survey those electronically, so we have a database of every city street and what the rating is for those. And so these are averages, but you'll see that we've actually increased a point each year the last three years. And so we are seeing that go up, and that's a result of the continued construction efforts of the 2007 bond issue, projects that come out of, say, the General Fund, ACOG projects, county projects, and even our in-house microservicing and chip seal projects. And so we are in a positive trend on making roads better. This next slide that I'll show you shows the number of lane miles that we have had under construction the last three years. And you'll see back in 2011, 53 lane miles under construction. You'll see last year 112, and now you'll see in '13, 169. Now, again, those are broken between the geo-bond and fund balance resurfacing, but we are impacting a significant number of roads in Oklahoma City. And again, going back to that citizen confidence, making sure that we provide quality roads for Oklahoma City, we are continuing to push very diligently towards completing the 2007 bond issue as quickly as possible, improving roads and making a dramatic impact. So I suspect that maybe future surveys will show that percentage change to a positive trend as opposed to one that may have a slight decline over the past couple of years.
What's the total number of lane miles in Oklahoma City?
We have about 8,000.
8,000, okay.
When we look towards the number of trails and sidewalks constructed, this is another council indicator. These are sidewalks and trails that have been constructed predominantly at the bond issue. This does not include the MAPS III work that is also currently underway. And that's something that as the construction starts and those, we can start reporting on that. But you're going to see, we have increased the number of sidewalk and trail miles from last year to this year more than double. And again, as we continue to look at that, if you recall in the 2007 bond issue, any street widening or any street resurfacing will include at least a sidewalk on one side of the street if it doesn't exist. We're also doing upgrades, and that's going to account for about 350 new sidewalk miles over a 10-year period of the bond issue. So we're significantly into that now. We are moving towards more residential resurfacing in the future years of the bond issue, so we would expect to see more opportunities for neighborhood sidewalks to be installed that don't exist today. But again, I think you'll continue to see this trend also increase in the coming years. And then the last part that I'm going to mention before I turn this over to Rick is the transportation system, the average commute time in Oklahoma City. And here you're going to see a number of times in minutes over the past several years of the average Oklahoma City commute. This information does not come from in-house resources, this actually comes from the Census Bureau, but it aligns closely with a lot of the work that we're doing with the intelligent traffic system. We've done some in-house surveys with that. But you're actually going to see the commute time has increased, decreased, maybe slightly increased, but I would say that it's generally remained the same over a number of years. But as we look at individual corridors, and one of the presentations that I've provided to you just recently on the ITS is we did do a study on Classen Boulevard. And Classen Study was one that we had a goal of reducing our commute time. This would be from Northwest Fourth to Northwest Expressway on Classen Boulevard. We would like to have seen a 5% decrease in time, we actually received a 6% decrease. And so the total travel time on that went from 19 minutes to 18 minutes. It was a full-minute savings on a one-way commute, but if you look at that again over a year, the savings are significant, the reduction in delay of nearly 83 hours for a 40-minute round-trip commute citywide. You also see that there was a projected gasoline savings with that, too, of up to about $330 a year. So I think as we look at this travel time, it's one indicator that we're going to continue to closely monitor as we continue to fully implement the ITS and as we go citywide, as we've recently been approved to go to all 700-plus intersections. I expect this number to also start to trend downward in reducing those commute times. And with that, I can answer any questions that you may have on the quality of streets, sidewalk trails, or the commute time.
Eric, just a comment, and Jim, would you remind me, we've talked about modifying the requirement of a sidewalk just on one side of the street for any new development to, regardless of whether or not there's a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, if we have a new development, we would have a requirement for a sidewalk? Are we getting any closer to making that a requirement? Or what would it take? Or are there any disadvantages to having that type of a requirement?
Well, primarily, we now require it for the developer to put it in. And so now you're talking about whether or not the city puts it in as a part of when we're doing a street widening and such, because that's a major area. And the issue is that we don't, that when the '07 bond issues were passed, we did not calculate that into the cost of those projects.
So when the developer puts in a new project...
He's required whether to, regardless of whether there's one or not.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
But you did bring that point up, and the answer to that is that that's maybe not a bad idea, but we didn't budget that in the '07 bond issue.
Just a question on sidewalks. When we put MAPS III sidewalk project together, we were all disappointed by the fact that our money didn't go as far as we thought it was going to go. And part of that is because of the increase in prices of sidewalks, plus the fact that we've increased the width of the sidewalks, make some reasonable attempt to make it walkable. Since we've got a project now with actual bids, are we realizing any money that we didn't think we had?
Actually, the second sidewalk project was on the council for award this morning, and it's somewhere in between. They're not as bad as we thought they were going to be, but they're not as good as we'd originally planned because of some of those things you mentioned.
So there's maybe a little bit of money available, but not much?
But not a lot, we're going to be a few more, but not a lot. But we did approve in a budget amendment during the budget process back in about May, an additional $4 million for sidewalks, and we'll be coming forth with the process for those projects, too.
Thank you.
I have a question about the satisfaction of the streets. It says 35%. I thought in the citizen survey that we got two weeks ago, it said 19%. Am I looking at two different things, or?
I don't know, I need to follow up. And there were multiple questions included in the citizen survey, depending on major street, minor street, residential, quality of maintenance, and so I need to look at the number and maybe get back to you on that. But the one that's reported today is just between the major and the residential, and those two being averaged together.
So do you get those numbers from that citizen survey that was presented to us last meeting?
Doug, can you respond to that?
So in the citizen survey, the first part, we ask about major city services, fire, police, and roads was one of those, and that's where the 19% satisfaction came from, was in that very upfront section. Then later on, we ask about things about maintenance, of what do you think about traffic signs, street lights, and condition of major city streets and condition of neighborhood streets? And those are the questions that Eric is using to average. So it is from the citizen survey, is taking it at that later stage when we're starting to get into more detail about what people think about city streets.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, Jim, and a couple of months ago, we were talking about the possibility of having some additional funds that could be allocated for road repair.
Yes, sir.
Where do we stand on that?
I met with the Finance Department budget staff last week on the fund balance. Our fund balance is stronger than maybe I'd anticipated going into it, and so we will be making a recommendation within the next couple of weeks to do another budget amendment to bring forth $8 million out of fund reserve.
So that's still a possibility, then?
Yes, sir. That'll be our recommendation coming forth next month.
One last question on Eric. I just, you know, on the street widens, and I know I expressed concern about that, I'd like to know what our policy is going forward with our unlisted funds. We've sold, I'm not sure, we've sold a certain amount of the bond projects, we've gone through a much higher percentage of unlisted funds. We've had developers come to us recently who've said, I know I'm not on the 2007 bond project list, but I'd like the street widened, I'd like to put some money in if the city can take some money out of the unlisted funds and move us up to the head of this, and we've done that. What is our policy going forward as our unlisted funds is diminishing? If a developer comes to us today and says, I know I wasn't on the 2007 bond list, but I'd like to, I'd like to make a deal, I'd like you to match, what is our policy going to be going forward?
I mean, we look at those individually and very carefully, and obviously, it still needs to be a priority road in some manner for us to take a very rural section and just do a widening for zero benefit. If it doesn't have high volume already, if it doesn't have projected future development potential, I mean, we would still rate that at a lower priority and would most likely come up with a recommendation of no. But in cases where we've got a road that, say, just wasn't listed as a part of the '07, it's an area of growth, it's an area where other developers are moving in, and it's one that we can gain participation on, we obviously want to try to support that as much as possible. So they're case by case.
The one that was the $500,000 on Rockwell, where was that? That was Rockwell in what?
It's Rockwell, just north of Memorial, about three-quarters of a mile north. It didn't actually do a full mile, so we limited it to just the limits of the development that was being planned, and it was a 50-50 participation on that one.
Is that, I mean, is that a high traffic area? Is that a high...
But with the projected developments that were there and with the commitments that that developer came to us with, yes, it rose to a higher priority. Had they built those developments, we would have had significant roadway issues without having this roadway project in place. And the development is under construction today, it's being done concurrently with a roadway widening project.
So just back to the original question, so what is our policy going forward with unlisted funds diminishing? Are we going to be able to continue to do that?
On a limited basis, and it's going to be case by case. So we do know that there is a total to the unlisted funds that are available. There's an amount each year that's only made available through the sales. The priority is that they have to finish the listed projects. So the number one priority is that we have to be very careful as program managers, managing that 2007 bond program, to ensure that all the listed projects get completed as promised to the voters. And so that's something we track very, very closely. But obviously, we do take additional projects, ones on as need or a case-by-case basis for consideration and evaluate those. But we're not going to make a recommendation to the council that would jeopardize one of the listed projects being completed.
I guess, how would you prioritize, if you were going to do something that wasn't on the listed bond of projects that was promised to the voters, how would you prioritize, say, a street widening on Rockwell and Memorial versus maybe sidewalks where we're not going to get to them?
Sidewalks and street, I mean, so the answer to the question is that we don't have the ability with a bond issue to go straight out and do a sidewalk-only project. So currently, the way the bond issue in '07 was sold is there's not specific just for sidewalks, they come with the roadway.
And that isn't financial issue, that's a legal issue regarding just going out...
So you can do extra street widensings, but you can't do isolated sidewalk projects?
That's correct under the '07 bond issue. But when we have, say, two projects that are, say, of similar value, maybe similar priority, we're going to have to look at available funds and merit those against each other. Now, we haven't had that issue where we've had two competitive projects, we're getting one or two a year. We are doing some county partnership projects also. But again, I think, you know, it's one of those that's case by case.
Okay. All right. Eric, are we, we're not through with this presentation, right? Rick's got part of it, though? Okay. Rick?
Good morning, Rick Cane, Director of Public Transportation and Parking. This graph represents ridership activity over the last two fiscal years, and I've included it in this morning's presentation because I think it gives you a good background to understand just general ridership trends. Intuitively, you would expect that during those months when we have what we would consider good weather, that ridership levels would be higher than those months where we traditionally have either rain, snow, or ice. Another phenomenon that occurs that you see, in December, we see a ridership drop that occurs, and what we've traced this to is that final week in December, between Christmas and New Year's, we see a significant drop in our ridership, which is what pulls down the December number. And just one other comment back to that graph, this year particularly, we really saw a negative impact in April and May in our ridership. In April, we had eight days that we considered bad weather days, and it was because of the amount of rainfall that we had. May, we didn't have as many days, but we had severe weather, and obviously, those were the rainstorm and the tornado that occurred, which had a lingering effect on ridership on the days following those actual events. This next slide put in here just to remind you of the, and to thank you actually, for the amount that you've tried to put back into transit from a funding basis. In 2010, we actually started at that point in time with, you might recall coming out of a transit workshop, a pilot program, where we said, let's increase frequency on routes, and with increased frequency, we get increased ridership. And so that was really a test. You continued to allow us to do that in FY 2011 with some additional routes. In 2012, you essentially provided the continued funding to maintain those pilot programs, and then last year, we saw a significant increase. Just to kind of give you some basis, though, we run about 158,000 miles... Just to kind of give you some basis, though, we run about 158,000 miles in a year, or not miles, but I'm sorry, hours in a year. And so that 5,000 hours that you put in last year, we had four routes where we increased frequency on those routes, that was a little over 3 percent. Now, we are working now, staff has pretty much completed their review of the Nelson-Niagard Study. We will be meeting with you individually, depending upon your schedules here over the next couple of weeks, to inform you in terms of how we envision using that million dollars that you funded in this year's budget, and how we'll apply that in support of some of the objectives of the Nelson-Niagard Study. Finally, this last slide is really the threshold, or the item that we use when we compare our performance measurement, and that is riders per service hour. Again, remembering the trends that you saw earlier, ridership per service hour follows that. However, the one thing to remember is when you do increase service, and we have additional hours of service that we put on a street, that does put a downward pressure on ridership. You don't immediately see a big jump in ridership. It takes time to develop that ridership. And as we've talked before in previous presentations, you know, in fairness generally, you have to evaluate ridership, hour changes over a year's time period. But we have seen positive results from all of ours, but it will continue to be a challenge as we add more and more service over the short term to build ridership. But clearly, over the long term, we've seen over the last, I believe it's four years, we've jumped from 16 riders per hour to 18 riders per hour. So on a percentage basis, we're starting to see significant shifts. As you make service more convenient for people, people are more likely to ride the service.
Questions for Rick?
When we start to think about allocating more funding to this, to the buses, is it true that the best way to increase ridership and increase the system is to do it the way we've done it in the past? That is, by more frequent trips on a, on a particular route? Or Councilman Shadid suggests on occasion that one of the problems is that we don't respect the rider. That is, the bus stops themselves and some of those amenities that would make it much more, the rider would feel much more comfortable, much more welcome to ride, much more convenient. At what point do we need to start spending money on those kind of amenities as opposed to just increasing, what do you call it, headway times or those kinds of things?
Right. You know, as you have provided funding for the transit system, we generally looked at it in terms of operational funding. And so, again, as Nelson-Niagard said, if you want to see ridership increases happen faster, add frequency. That doesn't preclude adding extended hours of service or Sunday service, but you'll see a faster return by adding frequency. How we've started to address the questions that actually several of you have brought up relative to the amenity, or the quality of amenities, we're actually funding that much out of our federal money, because our federal money actually has to go towards capital expense. And so our AVL project that we've been talking about now for about, well over a year, we had, took us a while to put the funding together to piece it, because that's about a $2.5 million project that we're doing. We are now finishing up our beta testing on that. The AVL system itself is working well. We do have signage, not only in the transit center, but actually on the street. We've got five pilot locations out on the street where we're showing real-time information and bus shelters with the intention that we would expand that. We've enhanced the quality of the cameras on the, on the buses to give people even a higher level of feeling of security because of that. We have brought money to the table. Now, ours is only a few hundred thousand. I think this last year, we spent about $400,000 towards sidewalks. So in the scheme of things, it's not a lot of money when you're bringing millions to the table, but nonetheless, it's a way that we're able to take the sidewalk projects that the city is doing, whether it's bond funds or MAPS funds, and make that connection to the curb, because oftentimes, that sidewalk's sitting back three feet, and you've got a green space in between, and if you're in a wheelchair or have mobility problem, it doesn't really make that connection. And so we're doing those kinds of things. Bus shelters, we've talked a lot about bus shelters. We amended the street furniture ordinance, or you did. You allowed us to do that, and we're now going through the process of, of selecting a higher level of bus shelter to be out there that we will use. And as we have funding to increase that, that program will continue to put a focus on that amenity element. So they definitely go hand in hand. Again, we've tended to, because of the restriction we have on federal funds that have to go to capital programs, that's kind of how we decided to fund the amenities as opposed to where the council has blessed us with additional funding. That goes into operational issues.
So the federal money must go to capital?
Yes, it does.
A lot of that. But one of the things, again, I've got this one bus stop that I see all the time, just, but as I, when I go by that bus stop and I realize what a bad experience it is for those people to wait there, if I were a, not a, not a transit-dependent rider, but someone that might, I might consider it, that visual experience would stop me from doing that. I would not want to be in that situation that those people find themselves in. So I would say, I'm not going to do it. I'll, I will remain driving my car or whatever other way I can get there. It's not so much I fear the bus. It's not a question of fear. It's just a question of would I wait, would I, would I have stood out in the rain this morning to catch a bus if I had a choice? You know, obviously, no, I wouldn't have.
And we certainly understand that, that issue, and we're trying to address that issue now and putting a priority on those amenity items.
That, I certainly agree with Pete, and I think the time to invest in, in those kind of amenities is right now. I think that if you're saying that we're moving forward with the fund balance in a couple of weeks, I've, I've asked Rick to identify 15 locations in Ward 2. I think that if you ask me the highest deficiency we have in our streets in Ward 2, it's inadequate bus shelters. He's identified 15 locations. We could take fund balance money and leverage it by getting matching federal dollars to make it go farther, and then I'd like to see us even try and recoup some of that through advertising, but I think business-wise, it makes sense, and for the riders, it treats them with the dignity they deserve. So what I would like to do, if we move forward with the fund balance, is move forward with those 15 sites. If the council is fine with that, fine. If you're not, you know, I'd like to talk to you about it in the next weeks before we bring that forward. But we've identified the sites, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward in Ward 2. Any other comments or questions for Rick? All right, Rick, thank you. Is that it for city manager reports?
No, we're, a couple more on this. We've got, wanted to talk a little bit about wellness, and Debbie Martin talked a little bit about education.
Okay. I will be brief, Mayor, Council. I would like to say to you that we are trying really hard to address your priorities, and those that we have the most impact on are the percent of citizens that report regular leisure time, physical activity, and the number of citizens that live within a half-mile of a recreational facility or trail. We are pleased that the most recent survey showed us that 66.4 percent of our population in Oklahoma City, our citizens do participate in a leisure time activity, physical, physical activity at least once per week, and that exceeds the target that was set, 50 percent, by a significant amount. I don't think this is a time to say to ourselves, "We're happy with this," but I am pleased that, that we see that amount of participation. I think we need to continue encouraging that and by no means be satisfied with that number, but we are pleased. We hope we're having an impact on that number with the operations that we have in athletics, aquatics, recreation centers, and senior centers. In '14, that is FY '14, you saw fit to approve our recommendations to restore the community center supervisor position at Melrose Community Center, which will help us with our programming there that, in many cases, involves physical activity. You also allowed us to restore our assistant naturalist at Martin Nature Park, who conducts many tours and hikes, so there's certainly physical activity involved there. From a position that we added in FY '13, our adult athletic and fitness coordinator, we've implemented adult softball leagues. Soon, we'll have an active adult flag football league. We've also implemented, and we're in the beginning stages of our City Fit Program that encourages city employees also to become more fit. Our service provision model has always included the assistance of partners, and you see just a few of those partners there who help us encourage physical activity primarily of youth. Those partners alone provided the city and citizens in the city more than 50,000 athletic-style participations. In the most recent survey, it was noted that we needed to do a better job of communicating what our services are to the public, and we think we'll soon be doing that, communicating much more effectively as a result of our upcoming online registration for our activities. We're also pleased to report that we're, we're moving towards 60 percent of our population being able to access a recreational facility, trail, or park within one-half mile. That accounts to more than 335,000 citizens in our community living within that distance of one of our 153 parks, our trails, recreation centers, and other recreational ventures that involve them in physical activity. New recreational opportunities over the past few years are many. I'll start with 1995, because that's when we received our first bond issue for many, many years, and we feel we're then able to begin making significant progress. More than 350 park improvements have been completed since 1995. Additional parks have been added, including South Lakes, Route 66, Bluff Creek, and under construction, Kitchen Lake. We've added 71 miles of trails, 18 spray grounds, which really encouraged activity on the part of children, three skate parks. We've added basketball courts, playgrounds, athletic fields, on and on. It's really been great to have the, the funding that we've needed for first time in many years. We have added more than $106 million of improvements to our park system over the past few years, and we have $66 million more dollars to add to future park improvements in the next few years. One of those park improvements that will be added will be what you see depicted before you now, Memorial Park Plan at Northwest 36th and Claussen. That park will be changed to a much more modern, but still honoring its history, park. We still have 90 more projects to do. We will build a new park in northeast Oklahoma City. We'll build two more skate courts. We'll renovate eight more basketball facilities and continue to make improvements to existing facilities. We're always reminded why we're able to do these things. It's from the support that the city council and mayor have given us, as well as the improvement, approval of many bond issues over the past few years that have enabled us to make these improvements. And I would try to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Questions for Wendell? Wendell, construction on Memorial Park starts what month?
Well, we haven't awarded contract yet. We're finalizing the design, so soon you'll be seeing a, a design come to you for approval and bidding.
Okay. And then if, assuming that's approved, then construction would begin?
I would anticipate the construction will begin by the end of this year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your Honor.
David? Wendell, thank you for the report. I think it's encouraging that two-thirds of our citizens are participating in some kind of activity that may not necessarily mean in our parks.
Not at all. No, no, sir. I didn't mean to imply that.
Yeah. And then 60 percent of our citizens live within one mile, a half a mile of a trail or a park. That's encouraging. Going back to Early Wine Park, any consideration as far as the city possibly developing a walk-to-the-park campaign? And the reason why I bring that up is some people say we don't have enough parking spaces, say, at a park like Early Wine. But so many of the people who utilize that park live certainly within one mile, and I don't see a problem with them walking to the park and not needing a car to get there if we could help encourage them to do that with some kind of promotional campaign.
Interestingly enough, I just met with the Recreation Division head yesterday to discuss that.
Okay.
We think there are all kinds of advantages to that. One is it creates community.
Yeah.
If we can get people to walk from their neighborhoods to the park, they'll be able to visit with each other on the way and going back. It also gives them exercise getting to the park.
Sure.
So there's all sorts of advantages. So, yes, sir, we do have an interest in doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
But else? All right. Wendell, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Debbie Martin, Chief of Staff of the City Council, and I'm pleased this morning to give you an update on support high-quality public education. I think because this is kind of a unique priority to those of us who think about operational issues with the city, I wanted to just simply restate what our priority statement is for this. Public education that produces graduates who are prepared for future success provide the foundation for a strong community. We must encourage accountability in public education and find new ways to partner with the Oklahoma City Public Schools, other school districts, businesses, community groups to improve educational outcomes for our children. There are two measures that we use in terms of this particular council priority. One is those third graders that are reading above or at the third grade reading level. In 2012, in the spring, there were 8,371 third graders that were actually tested. The overall for our entire metro area of those that were reading at that level were 78.5 percent. The major, which are indicated on the lower part of that slide, that, those particular districts were at 77.4 percent. Oklahoma City, I-89 individually was at 62.8 percent, and the other suburban areas excluding I-89 were 82 percent. The second indicator in this area is the graduation rate. These are provided by the State Department of Education, also for the spring of 2012. The overall was 89.8 percent. Again, the major OKC school districts, 87.1. Oklahoma City, I-89, 77.2, and the suburbia at 90.5. I was really pleased in 2011, Mayor Cornet and the school district formed a joint education task force. Council members Pete White and Pat Ryan represent the city council, and we have two members of the school board that also serve, and they have made great commitment to this particular mission, meeting every month since August of 2011. The objectives for this particular task force were to establish a positive work relationship between the school and the city of Oklahoma City, and to identify partnership opportunities, including business practices, operations, student support, and marketing. Some of the initiatives that I want to very quickly go over, one is performance-based and management audit. Councilman Ryan and Councilman White, along with Jim Williamson, our city auditor, have worked very, very diligently in this regard. And I am pleased to report that they did contract, the district contracted with ESCO, a retired executives group, and they are in fact, we're looking at the HR department and the finance department. In terms of systems and processes, Mr. Springer is anticipated to report to us at our August meeting this month and let us know what the findings of that particular audit were. And there are other audits that are certainly scheduled. The Oklahoma City Reading Buddies, in an, in an effort to do something about educational outcomes, we actually began a pilot program at Heronville, and that school was chosen by the district. Heronville being an intercity school, and they had not ever had an adopter. The school district felt this was a place that we could begin. I was pleased. We had 71 of our executive and management staff that participated in that program, along with two members of council, Councilman Pete White and Councilwoman Sawyer. We actually donated 284 volunteer hours during that pilot program. We worked with first graders, and it worked for 30 minutes. At the conclusion of that particular program, we determined it was time to move to maybe a more advanced program. So we actually entered into a program for a whole year at Heronville in 2012, 2013. There were 92 employees of our city that worked with first graders for 30 minutes a week. And then we also began a program at Hayes Elementary in January of 2013, and we had 32 volunteers there. But over the 2012, 2013 year, we had almost 800 hours of volunteer service that were given to the schools. We will be conducting a program this year in the spring at Heronville, and then we will have one at Hayes in the fall. will have one at Hayes in the fall. But our goal, obviously, is to see improved readings, scores from those children that are being tested. So we have a pre and post-testing, but we also look at the hours that we commit and the outcomes that we can actually see from the students there. The next one is youth council. We've been very concerned, and Councilman White actually helped me with this. We met with all the high school principals and said, "We're really concerned about the number of applications coming from I-89." This year, I'm pleased to report, we had 15 applications from I-89, not including charter schools, I-89. Four of those students were actually selected this year. And I'm excited. We have a great youth council this year. Had a wonderful retreat last weekend. After-school programs, we're still working on that particular initiative, Sandra Park and our Parks Department. Marketing and telling our story, Kristi Jaeger and our staff have been very helpful in terms of producing a show on featuring Maps for Kids and successes with the district. And then the last of these that I want to discuss is the high school career academies. Last year, the district implemented five high school academies, and we had eight of our city staff, engineers, IT people, finance, and also health, that served on those academy boards. This year, we anticipate that we'll be opening four more schools, and we hope to have individuals serving those as well. Probably the highlight from the academy program, and Councilman Ryan writes the most of this, it really was a cooperative effort because Tinker Credit Union, through the business community and the high school, now have a branch fully operational in the school, which is very commendable. And that would be my report today. Do you have questions?
Yeah.
How soon do you think we'll be able to have comparative statistics on graduation rates? And, you know, we've got statistics of what they were when we kind of really kicked this off, but none of these statistics showed outcomes after that period. Now, we've been in it now, this is the Reading Buddy Program, for instance, we've been in that, this is the, this will be the third school year, as this fall we'll begin the third one. Is, are we going to be able to get numbers that are going to show better, hopefully better outcomes, but outcomes on third graders passing the test and all that?
I would really hope so. I'm really excited, the new principal at Hayes Elementary, I met with him yesterday morning, and we want to focus on second and third grade students. And so independently, we will be looking at those scores individually for Heronville and for Hayes, where we're spending these numbers of volunteer hours. In terms of graduation rate, I would say, and I've spoken with Joanna and Doug about then, that I think that probably this becomes kind of a baseline, and those are some discussions we need to have in the joint education task force about what are the initiatives, and then where does the city step in to help with those initiatives?
I mean, if we evaluate the program, about how good it makes me feel to be a part of it, it's a grudging success, but we have to have some baseline numbers that make it, that we can go forward with.
We do receive, unfortunately, because the mobility of a lot of the students that we work with, in my own experience, the child I had at Heronville was no longer there after the first week, so I began to see different students. But we do have pre and post-testing, which I think is important to at least evaluate what we are doing in terms of our efforts with those two schools.
Okay, that's, one of the other things that I thought we, that maybe we could add a little bit, is we talked, the things that Debbie talked about, there have been some other things that the city's done.
Yes.
That in this, that with, as a result of the task force. For example, probably all of you already know this, but time is available to the school, to the I-89 on Channel 20 now, and they have a regular programming on Channel 20, which, because, and Councilman Ryan is the big advocate of this, and that is that we think Oklahoma City, I-89, is doing a better job than they get credit for. And some of that is their fault. Some of that is they haven't really figured out a way to get credit for what they're doing. And they're in a tough situation. I think one of the things that we, both Pat and I would agree to after spending a couple years with this, it is a very difficult situation. But they're probably doing better than they get credit for, and so we've encouraged them through, one of the ways is through this access to our television channel to try to publicize the good things they're doing. And I, hopefully, that will kind of raise public confidence, public awareness, that they are doing a better job.
And our staff in PIO has also worked closely with the PIO staff at the district and some of the social media and other things that they can use to better communicate with their patrons and their students about information about the school.
At the risk of offending Councilman Shadid, one of the accomplishments that we had was that both Grant and Capitol Hill have been exempted from the football playoff program, and they're going to be able to try to rebuild the football program. And that idea started with us.
With us.
That started with us. I mean, the other people got involved in it and helped a hell of a lot. Representative Morissette, Representative Cleveland really took the ball and, literally, and got it changed. But it started in that committee. That's one of the things that could change the way. I know you didn't play football. I heard you say to someone the other day, you wrestled, so, but we didn't affect their wrestling program.
Well, there are certainly other initiatives that we have undertaken and feel like that we've made some headway with, but I just wanted to highlight some of those things that I felt like were really critical. And the communication piece is certainly very critical.
And I want to compliment Debbie. She's the person who's held us grouped together over two years. She's been our minute taker, the meeting arranger, and just the spark plug that made all this thing work. And, you know, as warm and fuzzy as the reading program makes the participants feel, the real value, I think, or a real value associated with it, is a template that other companies could use to implement a program like this. Debbie's done a great job of putting together a program that addresses a lot of the concerns and problems people foresaw, or seen, in this kind of a program. Anyway, I think it's done an excellent job. And just one other thing on the, some of the issues that our school system is dealing with that we need to be aware of is over 90% of the kids in Oklahoma City Public Schools are on a free or reduced.
Free lunch.
Lunch program. And so that indicates a relatively high level of poverty among those students. And the second thing is, it was alluded to by somebody, of the mobility issue. We have people who will enroll in the first grade at a school and go to two or three other schools during that first grade period because their parents move around for a variety of reasons. And there's an opportunity, I think, for the city maybe to look at that and maybe provide some incentives for people who will stay in one place long enough for their kids to go to school for a full year. I don't know what they might be, but I think it's something that is a serious issue with the schools that we've not taken.
Mr. Ross told me yesterday that they've already had children leave the school, and it's been in session one week. And it really is the mobility for the rental rates or other things. And we have, as Councilman Ryan indicated, have offered my services or other services to the district as they recruit new partners for the school district to try to help them work and become a lot more, a lot stronger in terms of those volunteers in the schools.
And to give you some indication of how successful our branch of the Tinker Federal Credit Union is at John Marshall High School, it would have been held up once.
Yeah.
Because they're obviously collecting a lot of money for somebody.
You know, on transportation, I mean, if you're looking for new ways to partner with Oklahoma City Public Schools, I know we've talked about this, what is the, if you were going to try and find economies of scale, you've got the school bus system, you've got our transit system, is it that we don't want adults and children to mix? Is it that we?
We actually were prepared to assist, and Rick Kane was very, very important to that, in transporting the children from their home high school to the academy site. But Rick was able to give them some routing kinds of techniques that did not require, and Rick certainly can respond better than I, but routing techniques that did not require the city to come in and help them. But it did, in fact, they estimate about a $50,000 savings just because of the routing information that Rick was able to provide to them.
And Rick and I are meeting with one of the school district members, I think this week, to further discuss doing some additional programs with the school district.
So is there a concern about mixing children and adults or not being mentioned?
It's a work in progress. We talk about how we can use our transit system to help them virtually every month. We talk about, could we do this, could we do that? They, Rick's there, he's there at every meeting, been.
Rick has also designed a map and has physically located every school in proximity to our current busing routes that would allow a lot of latitude for the students and for the school to partner more extremely with us.
Yes, I mean, we've got a history of working with the school system back in the late 90s when the school system was having trouble hiring operators and also providing buses. This was prior to the Maps for Kids inclusion of buying new buses for the school system. We actually ran some service. Now, we do have a federal requirement that says we cannot design a route solely for the benefit of the school system, so any route that we do to assist moving students to school has to be open to the public. But, you know, it wasn't surprising, there was a little hesitation from the school system in regards to the concern about mixing students and adults. Actually, it turned out more that the adults were a little nervous of mixing with the students, so it actually worked out very well. And then we had a second program that we did for a number of years where we provided free transportation for after-school activities. It started being pushed by the sports departments, but we expanded that to include any after-school activity, whether it be music, drama, whatever the case might be. We just asked the school system to be the overseers of it and legitimize whatever students would qualify for that program. They were giving them passes, and as long as they wrote our routes, we didn't create any special routes for them, but they were able to write our system for free. So we encouraged that use. We do have to be careful, Oklahoma does have a yellow, a school, a yellow school bus rule, and again, from the federal perspective, there's certain things we can and cannot do, but I think it does give us latitude. And as Mr. Couch said, we're going to be talking to them this week to see other ways that we might be able to integrate the two. And clearly, whether it's a design feature, which we were able to do this last year where we didn't have to provide the service, or whether it actually is putting students on our buses, we're happy to do it.
You have other questions for Debbie?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. Debbie, I cannot even think of an organization that's put as much effort as Debbie and the members of the Oklahoma City management team that's participated in this Reading Buddies program. It's been just great to listen to the stories. When I was at the state local program during July, I would meet various people from throughout the country, some of them, well, one was a member of the school board in Dallas, Texas, and throughout the country. They all have the similar problems that we've identified, you know, 90-plus, sometimes 98% on free lunches and other types of assistance, and they all experienced similar problems that we're experiencing. Some of these percentages are even worse. And I got the impression that, well, there's just no solution for a large urban school district. And then towards the end of that program, we had a couple of sessions on early childhood development and public education, and there's some tremendous, I mean tremendous, case studies out there of school districts, such as Boston School District, with statistics much worse than Oklahoma City's, and making such a dramatic improvement within a few years, say relatively few years, three years, to where they had the highest increase in students' results within the whole state of Massachusetts. There's other school districts that have achieved similar type of support. So it can happen, it can occur that we turn Oklahoma City Public School districts around to where we no longer see this large gap as far as performance between Oklahoma City and the suburban school districts. We're closer to their levels, and I would just encourage our task force to look into bringing in some of these consultants who really have been a part of some great success stories. And I think the business community would lead with the support in that effort so it can be done. We just have to reach out to some of these people to, you know, and we also have to have an agreement that everybody's is willing to listen and implement some of these changes, just, you know, give up their, oh, what's the term I'm looking for?
Self-advantage.
Yeah, well, and sometimes I have to admit, well, maybe we haven't been doing as good of a job as what we can, and here's some new ideas, let's try this and see what happens. So there's some great success stories, and I'll be happy to share those case studies with those who have an interest, just to see what can be accomplished with improvements in the education system for large urban school districts.
Any other questions for Debbie? All right, Debbie, thank you. All right. Citizens to be heard. We have two people that have signed up. Hiram Sasser.
Thank you for your patience.
No, no problem. Thank you, guys, very much. I'm Hiram Sasser, I'm the Director of Litigation for Liberty Institute, based just outside of Dallas, but I thought I'd come up since this is my hometown. You're talking about my home school district, Northwest Claussen, where I graduated from in '94, and graduated from Oklahoma City School of Law, and I was born at St. Anthony's Hospital, I should be, you know, living here, I guess. I wanted to talk to you guys a little about the MAPS III, the Health Wellness Center issue, dealing with, one of the choices is a project done by, that's going to be done by Healthy Living, Inc., and that's going to involve at least back to the church on Sundays for the Putnam City Baptist Church for church services. And it seems, I think the ACLU came and spoke about that that may present a problem or an issue. That's not true. We sent a letter, by the way, to Mr. Jordan and Mr. Couch to this effect, but I thought it might come up and just share this for a few minutes. It's actually not true. Actually, considering that it is, that there would be any kind of religious use of the facility on a Sunday on leasing the property, if the city were to deny the contractor, deny the relationship based upon that as an issue, the city would actually be violating the First Amendment. So, you know, it's always, a lot of times people think, well, gee whiz, the best way to go is, you know, don't do anything with an organization that may be leasing its property to a church on Sunday. It's actually the flip side. If you do that, and that's the reason why, then that can obviously create significant problems. There've been three Supreme Court cases directly on this issue, the Good News Club, Lamb's Chapel, and Rosenberg, and so that would be, it's called unconstitutional religious viewpoint discrimination. So I wanted to make sure that the council is aware of that. The best course of action is reviewing those proposals using your normal neutral criteria, what's the best proposal, ignoring the fact that there, a proposal may be being made that would have some sort of relationship with a church on a lease basis that they would be using on Sundays. It'd be the same thing as if you had any city building and somebody was going to, wanted to lease the building, you would lease it for various things, it would be open to do that, but you chose, well, a church wanted to lease it on Sundays for church services, and you said, "No, you can't do that." I mean, that's black letter law. It's been law for more than a decade from the Supreme Court that you wouldn't be able to do that. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that with you, that it's not just that it's not an Establishment Clause problem, it's actually that if you follow the ACLU's advice, you will actually be violating the First Amendment, and that's obviously a problem. You know, you guys have been here for a very long time, I want to just give you a brief comment. Does anybody have any questions about that?
So that would apply then if we entered into an agreement with a synagogue that wanted to do it on Saturdays or a mosque that wanted to do it on Fridays, same argument?
Exactly. It would be the same way. So if, for example, if there was a synagogue that wanted to put in a bid for the MAPS III, for the Senior Wellness Center, and they wanted to do it the same way what they're doing here, which is going to have a secular nonprofit administer it according to appropriate rules, you're going to have to do that, but then on Saturdays was going to lease the property back to the synagogue for use as a synagogue, if you were to say, "No, we don't want to be involved in that," you would actually be violating the First Amendment rights of the synagogue. Does that make sense? So the best course to go is you just look at the contracts and just, based on the normal neutral criteria. neutral criteria, what's the best deal, what's the best location, you know, all the normal things that you would use, but you wouldn't want to include, or you wouldn't want to, you would want to take out of your thinking whether or not there's a religious identity that's involved. Does that make sense?
Any other questions for Hiram? Welcome home, Hiram. We're glad to have you back.
Hey, thanks, appreciate it.
You bet, thanks. Roy Stafford?
Good morning again, everyone. Roy Stafford, 3901 South Portland Avenue, apartment 109. Again, my phone number, and if you're watching this, you might want to take notes, is 405-686-7645. Reason I'm giving out that additional information, I fully anticipate being contacted by a few people that watch this address. This is a, this is a United States Postal Service envelope that's addressed from me to me. It was a date stamped January 13, shortly before the lady fell out. This is what I was going to talk about that day that we adjourned the meeting, and I wasn't able to address. My absence in being around is is solely and wholly due to my wife's medical situation. She's going, she's left her going on procedure this morning. That's why I'm here, because that's the only time I can come down there, is when I know she can't get to me. Anyway, permission to approach Mr. Greiner, is it?
Greiner.
Greiner, I want to ask you a new service right on that envelope, that it is sealed officially by the United States Postal Service, sign your name, put the date on it. Because I'm going to divulge the contents of that envelope, and I'm going to be real quick. I'm not even going into, all this is right off the cuff. The reason I'm doing this is, this is one of your rookie council persons. The contents of that envelope is a communication between myself and members of Governor Fallon's staff, where they email me back.
Okay.
This is a good deal. I'm serious.
You're on shaky ground here, Roy, so, but keep going.
Big one. Oh, everybody's hungry, is that what you're trying to say, Hiram, Roy, get through? Ah!
That too, but.
That's why I'm going fast, watch this. So if, no, no, we're not passing that down, are we? We're not passing it. All I'm asking you to do is, is put your name on there, sir, to certify that it's closed, it's been through the mail system and it hadn't been opened. That's all I'm asking you to do. Okay. Now, the reason I did ask you with a freshman council person is because everybody else been here. This is something totally new. Mr. Pettis, Senator Johnson, the part of this email is to her, the rest of it is to the governor's staff, so she knew what I was doing, because she's the reason why I get down like I do. And I'm going to go really quickly. This is something that's going to be along with Sweet Brown. Ain't nobody got time for that. This is going to go all over the country, if, if, I'm serious. As many times as I have addressed the council since 2004, we haven't yet to be able to do anything that I suggest. Beulah May, the day she died was May 19th. There was, May 19th is a significant date in Oklahoma history. That was the date of the first tornado. I ain't saying she got nothing to do with it, but anyway. I spoke with Chief City out in the hallway about a specific African-American officer that's on the Oklahoma City Police Force that disappointed me to the fullest. I stopped and asked this young man to go check on Patricia, because she had done something that worried me, but she was with her daughter, Latoya, and they don't like me, because I don't bend and I don't break. The way I was raised, and Ms. Kersey will tell you, just like that day, Ms. Kersey told me to get off of that, back of that seat, I jumped down, Ms. Kersey will tell you, the way I was raised, if you're older than me, I'm going to do what you say. That's just the way it is. I asked this officer, McAllister, to go check on my wife, and he told me he was off duty. I stood there, and he listened to me till he got sick of me, then he sent me on down the road. Black officer works out of Real Rogers Patrol Division. Then he jumps in his car and goes after another traffic violator. Now, we pay these police to do protect and serve. We pay these police to, to be a straw boss, Mr. Shadid, that's the term that I was looking for a while ago. There's a straw boss mentality amongst a lot of people. And I just, Ms. Kersey, Ms. Sauer, are you aware of what the ATM fee is at the bus terminal?
Roy, see if you can wrap this up in about a minute or so.
Okay, 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 boy, okay.
The process is for you to talk, not to ask questions. So just go ahead and wrap it up.
Yes, sir. Watch this. The guy that was in front of me, he asked a few questions, and let me tell you how long he was up here, because I started like the counter. It was three, he was, he spoke for exactly four minutes and 12 seconds. Now, do you know what the fee is at the ATM machine? I addressed it with him. I'll see y'all.
All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.